I will call to order the Plainville Select Board meeting for May 20th, 2024. We will begin by a review of the agenda. Want to make a note of everyone and remind everyone that this, as posted on the door of this meeting room, this is a recorded and hopefully will be live meeting by the Select Board and also recorded by North TV. Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence with Memorial Day on Monday. Please remember all those heroes who have given their lives in service of our country. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. All right. Thank you all for being here a little bit early today, too. We've got a big agenda and we're going to be starting it off with a town meeting review of warrant articles and logistics with our town moderator, Luke Travis, who's nice enough to join us today. Before we get into that, could we just have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Actually, you know what? Why don't I run through it? Yeah, so we're going to approve the minutes of the consent agenda momentarily. We'll have public comment throughout the meeting as needed. We've got some announcements Mr. Noble will make. We have under Old Business, a five-year projection overview by our Finance Director, Julie Hebert, roadwork update by DPW Director Dennis Morton. Under New Business, special town meeting report regarding articles on the warrant and the water treatment plan, communication plan. We've got an introduction and appointment of Michael Mullen for our Director of Planning and Economic Development position. We have an introduction of Melissa Bingham for Director of Veterans Services. We've got an update from Edward Vanyo from BASF. We've got revolutionary encampment event permit for Telford Park. The Lions should be here for an event permit application at Field of Dreams. And we also have clear gov announcement and introduction by Finance Director Julie Hebert. Public comment will be taken throughout the meeting, suggested future meetings. Our next scheduled meeting will be at just, I think, ahead of town meeting on June 3rd. And town meeting will be held at the Wood School, June 3rd, and it is a six o'clock start?
Seven.
Seven o'clock start, thank you. Although I think we probably will be in session shortly there, shortly there before.
We'll be probably at 6:30.
In the library around 6:30. And after that, it's Monday, June 24th. Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented and approve the minutes of the May 6th, 2024 regular meeting and minutes of the May 9th, 2024 special online meeting as presented.
So moved.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Travis. The floor is yours, sir.
I saw your last meeting. You did a terrific job on the articles, the large three.
Very good. I think, as we have done in the past, really, I think this is just to take a look through the warrant together with you and not only discuss, you know, logistics in terms of how each one could be presented and who may be presenting them, but also to just make sure that we are all on the same page in terms of what type of vote is required, and that way there's no question on the night of.
Sure. Thank you. I'll remember that for telling you.
Very good.
So our town manager's done a terrific job. I've just been handed this binder. I mean, I don't know what other moderator gets the setup that I do, but we're very lucky. So, beginning with number one, five and six, those are going to be consent agenda articles, correct? So we're going to take those all at once? Am I missing any or are those the only three?
Those are the only ones I was comfortable putting forward.
Okay, right. So those are all majority votes, one is the normal taking reports, five is to accept federal grants, state and federal grants, and then six is to accept and spend monies. Is this the chapter 90 money? Yes.
DOT.
Yep, DOT. So those are all majority votes, those will be taken at once. Twenty-two?
Twenty-two is the revolving fund.
Oh, yes, it is consent agenda. Yes, you're right. Very good. So twenty-two, we would be taking as part of the consent agenda as well.
Yeah, he has that listed as, we have, go through that one more time, one, two.
I have one, two, three, four items.
One, five, six, and twenty-two.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, are we concerned at all that Article 22 will require discussion or do you think you can explain it well enough at the beginning and that'll be okay?
It'll be the third time we've run this on the consent agenda.
We did run on CA last year.
What's that?
We ran it under CA last year.
Yes, we did. Yep. It'll be the third time it's been on the consent agenda and if a question comes up, it's the limit of spending based upon the income in.
So then we'll go to number two.
What's that?
Which would be the budget.
Just a minute I plug it in, it goes blank.
And let's see, who's making that motion? I don't have anyone yet, so someone from the Board of Select will make that motion.
Number two.
That's on the orange sheets and it's Brian Kelly who will be making that motion. So I put the orange sheets, Luke, in front of Article one because you'd have to do those two motions before you start.
And then on Article two, that would be a majority vote.
Correct.
And then we'll go to Article three.
So let's go back to Article two.
Where are the orange sheets?
Yeah, I don't have orange sheets.
Yeah, we've only got. Orange sheets should be before Article one. There's only one.
They're in this.
I only have one?
I have two orange sheets.
I have two orange sheets.
You've got the permitted.
The first two motions.
And then the second one is the consent agenda.
Okay.
Okay, that's what you're supposed to have.
Oh, okay.
So there's no orange sheets beyond that?
No, those are, those are not in the warrant.
Okay.
Those are just for the meeting administration.
Okay.
We'll spend some time on Article two, as we always do, and have polls as we go along.
So there's basically a placeholder motion at the back.
I see.
Yeah, that's part of the, so the motion for Article two.
And the budget is actually presented by the Chairman of the Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee will move the, will present the budget and make the motion to move the article. The important change here is that the transfer in from the Gaming Stabilization Fund only requires a majority vote and does not need the two-thirds like it used to need because the law changed. So instead of having an article to create the transfer, it's now can be part of the Article two motion.
Perfect. Which is majority.
Yeah. And just to be clear on that, it's because the law changed and the purpose of that fund was set up to, for this money, so we can do it as long as it's within that purpose.
I assume your name is Jeff, not Mark?
It is.
It says Mark.
No, no, Mark will be making that motion, Mark.
Oh, there is a Mark.
Yep. He's the chairman of FinCom.
All right, read.
Jeff's cousin.
Oh, guys, our troubles.
We have the same accent.
And we're on three.
Yep. This is also by Mark Johnson.
Also by Mark Johnson, okay, yeah.
Majority vote.
And that'll be a majority vote. Yep. Any questions on that? I mean, we're not going to take questions tonight specifically, but sure, no. And then number four, Jeff, you'll be making that motion.
Yep.
And that's a majority vote. Number six is part of the consent, we've already done.
Number five and six are consent.
Five and six, yeah.
Five and six are consent.
And now we're up to seven. Brian, you'll be making that motion, that requires a majority vote. Number nine?
Number eight.
Eight.
Eight. Okay, Jeff.
Eight's the transfer from the Water Enterprise Fund.
Yep.
To pay for operations.
Majority vote on that. Nine?
And nine is the Water Enterprise Fund to pay for capital projects.
And again, you're going to make that motion.
Who determined who's making what motion?
The chairman.
Okay.
Don't worry.
Okay, no, I'm just, I'm just curious because it's the first time I've seen it. No, it's the first time I've seen it, so I'm asking the question.
Yeah, and a lot of times we would, I mean, historically before Brian was organizing all this, we would, that's what we'd do in the half an hour before the meeting is figure out who wants what. So now we figure we give each other, everybody a little more time and make sure, you know, that person can be the kind of the first person.
Concentrate on your motions a little bit more, yeah.
And be ready.
And the article. So we're up to 10?
Yes.
Now, again, I'm looking at a binder and I like that you've put at the top there because the folks in the audience aren't going to have these binders, so we're going to have to tell them what page in the actual printed warrant that they'll get.
Now, I did produce a presentation last year. We put the article up and there was a suggestion that we put the motion up as well. So I've created a PowerPoint which I'd love to show you, but we can't seem to make it work tonight. So the motion will also appear on the screen.
It'll work at the meeting, though, right?
One, one hopes.
At the meeting, it'll be a direct plug into the projector as always from the laptop.
I can't figure out why it's not working.
Right, so that alleviates my need to be telling people, which I've done in the past, what you're hearing is not necessarily the motion being read.
Exactly.
So they can see what's being read.
Pay attention to the motion.
Yep.
Pay attention to the motion, correct. We always say that. So Article 10 would be Brian, majority vote. Eleven would be Brian and a majority vote. Twelve.
We did these because they were all related, right? It's all source, source, source. So Jeff did some.
It was source, source, yeah. Majority vote. And then thirteen, Maggie.
Excuse me?
Yep, go ahead.
On, I didn't notice this until now, but in Article 10, do we have a typo at the bottom in the motion?
It's corrected on mine.
I'm sorry.
Okay, it's not corrected on that.
Okay, yeah, ours was.
Sorry about that.
Good catch, geez.
What are you correcting?
Your book's correct, isn't it?
Never mind. The original printing said, it's set forth in Article 10, excuse me, Article 11, she said Article 10.
Same issue is on Article 11.
On Article 11, just corrected in mine.
Luke's book is correct, your guy, I hand wrote yours in. If I missed one, I apologize.
You just wanted to see if I was paying attention.
Yeah.
What are we up to? Twelve?
Article thirteen.
I think you were at thirteen.
Thirteen, yeah.
My apologies for that.
So Maggie, you're making that motion, that's a majority vote. And then I'm also getting, of course, the report from FinCom on all of these as we, before we go to the floor, as we always do. Fourteen, we have a four-fifths vote with Maggie making the motion, recommendation by FinCom, and this is an overlooked invoice from last fiscal year.
Good point.
So that's the four-fifths. And then Article fifteen is a majority vote, Lou LaBlanc is making the motion, FinCom will make a recommendation. Sixteen, Justin Alexander will make that motion, FinCom will make a recommendation, that's a majority vote. That's that Special Education Reserve Fund we did, was it last meeting or the meeting before? Seventeen, okay. Seventeen, Maggie, you'll be making that motion, FinCom makes a recommendation, that's a majority vote. That's the opioid class lawsuits, money, Article eighteen, Brian, again.
OPEB.
Yep, with a FinCom recommendation, that's a majority vote. Yep, okay. Article nineteen, Dawn, Danzewitz, we'll make, Danzer Kirk, we'll make that, and then David Binabits from FinCom with a majority vote. Twenty, Dawn again will make a motion, and then FinCom recommendation, that's a majority vote, CPA. Twenty-one, Jeff makes that motion, majority vote is required, and this is, is this the easement? Or no, this is a donation?
This is a gift of property.
Gift of property, okay.
Twenty-two is a consent.
Twenty-two is on the consent?
Yep.
Twenty-three, amendment of bylaws, so this must be a, yeah, two-thirds vote, Jeff making that motion. What are we doing here?
Updating the bylaw for the wage, non-union wages.
Twenty-four, Maggie with a two-thirds vote, this is the easement, right?
Yeah.
I heard someone say at the last meeting, I watched this morning, that there might be a plan of that?
Yeah, there'll be a plan, I'll put it up the screen. It is actually, it's, it's the connection for the water plant proposal, so they have to come across a piece of property the town owns.
I see.
So we have to give an easement to N Grid. It's our property and we need to give N Grid an easement to get it to our property.
Correct.
Simple. And the diagram is extraordinarily bland.
Lland, you said?
Lland.
It's better than the one you emailed us?
No, that's the same one. I asked him for more clarification, he said that's the guy.
I could just have my six-year-old maybe draw one for me.
Yes, that's about.
Maybe draw a blue line across it to say where the easement is.
Well, it's land property, I can see that.
Yeah.
So the ultimate plan that gets recorded is going to be quite detailed, I can guarantee you. Okay. Article twenty-five, motion by Brian, and we'll get a FinCom recommendation, and that's a majority vote. And finally, twenty-six, Brian will make that motion, FinCom recommendation and a majority vote. Okay? So the only thing I can add is what I read in the paper this morning, there's the annual Sun Chronicle Town Meeting article, like seasonal, and the one this morning talked about Foxborough and Norton and how this moderator in Foxborough purposely decided to tell cable not to broadcast it live, to encourage attendance. I'm not sure that's the right approach, but it's an idea, it's interesting.
We're on a delay, so.
Right.
The.
We've never had a problem, though, with quorum.
Yeah, I don't think they were worried about quorum in Foxborough, excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I don't think they were worried about quorum in Foxborough because they had, they were discussing three override proposals.
Right.
But I think they just wanted to really force people to pay attention and be there in person. I think they ended up with over, a little over 400 people there.
If we get 400, that's not going to happen.
That'll be the record. I wouldn't, I wouldn't think so.
It was an interesting thought.
Yeah, never better.
Is there anything going on with childcare this time?
Yes, there will be childcare as normal.
Okay.
It's all confirmed.
Perfect.
The only thing that we want to be aware of is childcare closes at nine, so we'll lose the parents of, you know, if we go beyond nine o'clock. I guess, Luke, I would defer to your experience, we have 26 articles, there's nothing particularly controversial here.
I'd be surprised if we make it to 10. I think nine thirty, maybe, over a ten. You know, having said that, you know, I'm always surprised, you never know what article piques some particular person's interest and gets them going, so you never know. But it does seem like it's pretty straightforward.
For the most part.
Yeah, yeah.
The budget should and will get discussion, but we don't have any other difficult ones on there.
Yeah. The only other thing I can tell you is from the state moderators group that I meet with, more and more towns are going to the clickers for voting, and some towns share them because they, I mean, they have different dates, so something to think about in the future. I don't think we necessarily need it at this point, but.
Are we going to just designate counters that the night of or?
Yes, I always do that.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. Try to get that done early. We didn't even, did we use them last meeting? Maybe for one vote? I don't remember.
I feel like we used them for once.
Maybe for one vote.
Any surrounding towns near us that are using the clickers?
I don't know.
No?
I could check that out, though.
I know there are some.
Are there?
I've heard good and bad about them, and most people say based on the size of what shows up at our meeting, it wouldn't be very cost-effective. We could borrow them from another town if we ever wanted to try them. There's a little bit of a learning curve, but no, and it does require display as well.
I'm sure the vendors would be happy to show it to you because they want to sell it to you. I think they go, what, like 25, 30 grand, something like that?
Yeah, I think we have other uses for that.
Better money, better spent.
We're hand raisers here in Plainville.
Yes, that we are. All right.
All right. All right, that was.
Anything else?
I mean, from a logistical perspective, I don't think so in terms of checking in. I mean, sometimes that is a rate-limiting step.
Yeah, I would love to encourage people to arrive, we'll be there ready for you by 6:20, 6:30. The more people that come early, the better it is for everybody, so it's just as possible to check in, over a hundred people in five minutes before the meeting, so come early, check in early, that would be great, settle, get your warrant, get your table work, and relax. We'd love to check you in early to try to leave you in.
The rush.
Will Libyan Finance Committee material out at this meeting?
There'll be an introduction to the budget by the two chairmen, the Finance Committee Chair and the.
I meant in terms of paper handouts, no.
So, one more thing about check-in.
Yep.
The last day to register to vote, and this is a voting, this isn't a election, the annual town meeting is a voting opportunity. The last day to register to vote is Friday, May 24th.
You are not on the microphone. You need to come to the podium.
The people at home can't hear without it. I'm sorry.
And this is important.
The last day to register to vote for annual town meeting is Friday, May 24th. There'll be a voter registration session here at Town Hall from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. You can also register to vote online. If you want to participate in town meeting, it is a voting opportunity, so you do need to make sure your voter registration is up to date and that you are registered to vote.
Excellent. Do you want to just repeat the thing about early sign-in for folks?
Oh, yes, we'll be, we'll be available to start checking people in at 6:30 PM on the night of town meeting. We encourage you to come early and check in so that you don't get stuck in a long line. It's very typical for people to show up five minutes before, seven, and then we have a long line to check in. Once we have a quorum, Luke usually begins the meeting, so 60 members is our quorum, so if you're still in line, you could miss the first few articles. Come early, we'll come to check in.
I'd have to hold over beyond the seven, I mean, I want to be there for folks, but to your point, I mean, if you think we have a warrant that can be done by 10 o'clock, that would be true if we start at seven. You know, wait till 7:30, then maybe not.
It's tough for people to stick around.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else?
Could we arrange for an email, town email blast about the voter registration session and the importance of that at the meeting?
I sent one out last week and I'll be sending another one out.
Beautiful, awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you both.
Thank you both. All right, thanks. All right, we can get a head start on the rest of the agenda. We've got a few folks in the room tonight who will be presenting, so let's start with an introduction of Melissa Bingham, our new Director of Veterans Services. If you could go right up to the mic there, that'd be great.
Hi, everyone, nice to finally see y'all's faces and.
Nice to meet you.
Meet everybody here in the town, so, yeah, I've been about a month and a half in now at this point, seen a mixture so far, North Attleboro, Rentham, and Plainville veterans getting into the role good, but I wanted to talk with y'all a little bit, let y'all know a little bit about me. Of course, I was blasted, you know, the Sun Chronicle, I just recently did a North TV interview for the towns as well, but it's always nice to share a little bit in person. So, four-year Army veteran, two years in Korea, one combat tour, then got out, and I've got eight years' experience at the VA as well, working in a mental health, so that's coming in handy with the veterans that I work with. You know, sadly, since I've been in the role here, we've already lost one in one of the towns to veteran suicide, so it's important to be aware of the mental health of the veterans and know how to be able to get them linked with services in the VA. So I'm really looking forward to that. We've got Memorial Day coming up, so we're in full swing this week getting ready for all the festivities. So I'll be over at the Senior Center on Wednesday for the Plainville Observation, and then Rentham, it'll be on the actual 27th, and North Attleboro's on the 25th. So we're getting things going and ready for all the towns, and yeah, just excited to be here, love working with the veterans.
Excellent, thank you. And the event, Wednesday at the Senior Center starts at 10:00 AM, is it?
10:00, yeah.
And then followed by a ceremony at the Humphrey House.
Flag planting at Humphrey House, yeah.
Very good. Thank you and welcome, any questions?
Just thank you so much for your service. I was especially happy to hear about your experience with the VA and mental health care for our veterans especially is something we desperately need more of and more awareness of and more support for, so anything we can do to help you in that regard, please reach out.
Thank you.
Absolutely, yeah, and in terms of communication, if we can help with, you know, getting the message out anywhere, whether it's, you know, through the town email blasts as we were just chatting about, or we all have our individual Select Board Facebook pages that we can help share anything that you've got, just let us know and we're happy to put the word out for you.
I will definitely.
Any other questions?
No, if I could just say thank you for your service and welcome. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much and thanks for coming tonight. See you Wednesday.
Sorry about the squeaky voice, too, with one of those days of allergies.
It's starting. All right, number two, I would like to invite Michael Mullen up, introduce, introduction and report Michael as Director of Planning and Economic Development.
Yes, no, like, thank you, Chairman Kelly, members of the board, my name is Mike Mullen. I'm really thrilled to be here tonight for consideration, for consideration to become the town of Plainville's next Director of Planning and Economic Development. I'm really excited to join your team because I've really been impressed, I've been impressed with Plainville's vision, I've been impressed, excuse me, like, I've been impressed with Plainville's vision for the future, one that really balances, one that balances its history, but also, but also has an eye, but also has an eye towards a sustainable future as well. Just if you gone, if you gone through my resume, my application, you'll note that from my experiences in Dayton, the city of Rockton, like, and also the town of Rockland, that I do have a range of experiences that, that really center, that really center on promoting, that really center on promoting balanced economic development, balanced economic development while also working to address and advance infrastructure priorities that come along with it, like, and the opportunity, as I mentioned, to join the team here in Plainville to advance a passion that I have to plan for smart, to plan for smart, excuse me, to plan for smart measured growth, growth while also, while also making sure, as I mentioned, that there's a balance with economic development and with infrastructure investments as well is exciting to me, and, like, you really, as you know, you have an amazing projects happening already, you have an amazing, you have amazing projects in the queue, and, yeah, like, how are you, like, and the opportunity to, to join you and to join the team here and to join the town administration and the whole team is, is, like, is just awesome, and I'm looking forward to getting to work.
Yeah, we are as well. It was a great conversation with you a couple weeks back, you know, you, you've got quite a bit of experience to bring to bear here, you know, you seemed right on the same page in terms of what we're trying to accomplish here, and, you know, we talked about the big shoes you have to fill with our former planner, Chrissy Arworth, you did a great job getting us to this point, but, you know, there's still a lot more work to do and things we've to do and things we've got to accomplish, and it sounds like you've got, got what we need. So, really appreciate it and really glad to have that position filled.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any thoughts, questions?
I would agree. It's great to have someone stepping in, and I, I think that you kind of hit the nail on the head, at least from my perspective, in that the, the real challenge is balancing our, our desire for economic growth with our other desire to remain a, a nice, small community. So, I, I kind of think you hit the nail on the head with that, at least from my perspective. And, and Mr. Chairman is right, there are big shoes to fill, but, you know, I think you're gonna find Plainville a really nice, a nice town, so welcome.
And I'll echo those comments. I had a great conversation with you last week, and I think we will benefit greatly from your experience in Rockland as well as other roles you've had in Dayton and Rockton. But I think the Rockland experience especially is gonna pay dividends as we move forward with projects that are impacting our town, center, district.
That's exciting.
That's gonna be a great thing.
Extremely exciting.
Thank you for joining.
Thank you.
I would just echo, you came strongly recommended for Mr. Noble, and he hasn't let us down yet here in rebuilding the Plainville Dream Team here, so...
No, I won't let him down or you down or the town down either. I really truly appreciate it.
Yeah, we do, too. And with that, I'll entertain a motion for the Select Board to vote to confirm the appointment of Michael Mullen as Director of Planning and Economic Development and waive the remainder of the time for the right of rescission.
So moved.
I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Welcome. Do we have anyone here from the Lions? How about for the Revolutionary Encampment Event Permit Application? All right, with that, we'll...
Wait a minute, I think Brenda...
What, do we?
I'm here.
Oh. Would you like to come up?
Well, I'm not one of the friends, but I'm not, it's not down to the friends, eh?
We have the answer from the police chief.
This is seven-five. Is there anything...
Seven-five, Revolutionary Encampment.
Yep.
This is a cultural council grant that the Senior Center and the Historical Commission received to do the Revolutionary Encampment at Telford Park, and we're really looking forward to what we plan on having, all kinds of demonstrations. I believe it's from three to six because there's another program earlier in the day there. So, we're all looking forward to it.
Yeah, that should be pretty cool. I don't know that we've ever, I've never seen this happen.
No, I haven't either. I'm looking forward to it, and I'm not a history book.
Right. It'll be very cool. Any issues or...
Yeah, we've got some feedback from the Police Department and the Board of Health that I want to bring to their attention. Chief Floyd is concerned about traffic and on-site that day and cross, crossing the street between the park and the Cumberland Farms and then off to the Senior Center. So, he's looking to have a discussion with Senior Center about perhaps putting a couple of police officers on that day for traffic and putting some, maybe some adjacent streets, some barriers to slow people down so we don't run anybody over. So, Chief Floyd is here, so did I capitalize your comments correctly?
I think so.
Thank you. Also, the Board of Health wishes to remind you that if there's a food vendor, they'll need a permit, even though it's sponsored by the COA.
I do believe that there's a barbecue at the Lions' club, so I'm sure that they'll be getting a permit.
Okay, and then the only thing remaining, the building inspector reminds them of the tent regulations, but if they're only putting up pub tents, that's not covered?
Yeah, no, it's just, it's just their little tents that they would have had during the Revolutionary War. I wasn't there, so I can't.
That was good, Brenda.
Maybe Stan could tell us about it.
Yeah, maybe Stan was.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you, that should be fun. All right, and with that, I'd like to, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Is there any concern, are there any insurance requirements?
They're covered actually under the town's insurance policy because it's a COA event.
Okay, all right.
COA.
Did I say it wrong?
Good question.
Did I say COA, right?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, with that, I think we'll move to seven-four, an update on the...
Should I make a motion?
We have a motion.
Oh, sure.
I'm, the Select Board vote to approve the application and waive the fee for the Revolutionary Encampment Event Permit, Telford Park, event date June eighth, twenty-twenty-four, two p.m. to six-oh-one p.m. Subject to the conditions as outlined, I don't know what those are, but...
That would be the police officer.
Okay.
And the...
And confirmed by the...
I think they're gonna confirm right now with the police chief, so we'll get that resolved. I don't think there's a problem.
Okay. What does that mean, confirmed by the board?
Confirmed.
So, like, we're confirming that they need...
You're confirming the requirements, you're accepting the requirements, resolving the issue with the Police Department.
And the permit.
And the food.
From the Board of Health.
Okay, all right. Subject to the conditions as outlined and confirmed by the board.
I'll second that motion.
All right, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Thanks for catching that. I was looking, I said, geez, I didn't see a motion, I missed it. All right, with that, let's go to seven-four, Mr. Vaneo, if you'd like to come up for an update on the BASF project. I know typically there's a presentation that we put up, but that's not working tonight, and it doesn't look like you have them for us, so we'll just do a verbal update.
Thank you. I appreciate you giving the opportunity to provide an update to the town on our project. My name's Ed Vaneo, I work for BASF, I'm the remediation specialist and project manager, project manager for the former Telford Park site in Plainville. Last time I was here, I mentioned that due to an internal risk evaluation, BASF had elected to voluntarily remediate the PCBs. Initially, we had remediated to a hundred, less than a hundred ppm, and voluntarily we decided to remediate it down to twenty-five. So, we applied for, got a notice and intent from the CONCON, and we provided advance notice and mobilized March, May the ninth. Since then, we've installed the erosion controls, had an inspection by the CONCON, and as far as I know, there were no deficiencies noted. Since that time, we've started excavation and transport and disposal, and as of right now, offloaded or excavated and transported roughly thirty-five-hundred tons, roughly running around three-hundred tons a day of approximately seven-thousand tons. We estimate, due to some rail issues, it may go a little bit longer into the first week in June, and we should complete the soil excavation at that point. The second part of the project is sediment removal in the south embayment of Turnpike Lake. We've applied for numerous permits from the Corps, Army Corps of Engineers and Massachusetts DEP, and we're awaiting those approvals. And what we would do is we would put a temporary dam across the south embayment, pump most of the water over that dam. The last six inches would go through dewatering basins and sedimentation equipment, and then allow it to infiltrate back into the, into the ground. After that, we would walk out on pine mats, excavate the contaminated material, perform the post-excavation sampling, and then remove the dams and let the lake return to its normal levels. So, again, we're waiting for those permits. We're hopeful that we can get them so we can move right from the soil excavation right into the sediment excavation. Another piece of the cleanup is the groundwater remediation. We did some spot treatment of some areas that have not responded well to the initial project where we didn't do most of the injections. That was done in May, May-June of last year, and we did our annual sampling in December. There are two or three more spots that need further treatment. We've gotten bids back about a week ago, and we'll be evaluating those bids and probably perform those spot treatment injections in late summer, early fall. So, that should basically complete the work on the site itself, so we should be done on-site work by the end of this year. The only other issue is the dam, which I know a lot of people are interested in. We filed, and through several rounds of comments and submissions with the ECNR, I believe we're waiting for the response for their comments on that, at which point, once we get that permit and the approval of our design, we would then implement the dam. Other than that, I think it's a lot of work, it's ongoing, and like I said, we should be done by the end of the year, at which point we would then offer the site for sale consistent with its use under your current zoning. And again, it would be residential prohibited by denotice and the A U. Alternative use limitation would be filed with the EP. We're running it.
And that's, that would be up for sale sometime early next year?
It's up for sale now, actually. So, we would, we would, you know, I'm assuming our real estate department is overseeing it right now, and we would negotiate at some point, and it would just, it runs parallel, which we wouldn't necessarily have to wait...
Okay.
...until the cleanup is completed.
All right. But the cleanup should be done by the end of the calendar year?
Yes. The groundwater, of course, will, will be continued to be monitored, and if I need to do more, I can do more. But right now, I don't expect to after this last round of injections.
Okay, that's great news. Any questions from the board?
Not really a question, I think it's fantastic to think of that site being sold and, and developed.
Absolutely. How many years has it been now?
Since I took over or at the start?
Yes, both.
The start was in nineteen ninety-three was when the site closed, and I took over in twenty thirteen.
Yeah.
Twenty twelve.
He's been coming here a lot.
Yeah, I know, I've never, you're the only person I've ever seen present on this, so, yeah.
Actually, can I ask one more question? And maybe this sounds dumb, but, so is any of the work that you're doing in terms of the sediment excavation, does that affect the Attleborrows' ability to draw off of Miramichi?
No.
No, because...
Not at all.
No.
We're, we're downgrading from your wells. So, the water kind of flows from the lake, and the lake pushes the water through our site. So, your, your wells are upgrading of those, and we don't get anywhere close to Miramichi. It goes down deep before it ever gets to Miramichi.
Okay, those were kind of connected somehow, though.
They, not, our, not, our site is not connected to Miramichi, and we're downgrading from your wells.
Okay, it's not my wells. I was more thinking about Attleboro because they pull from Miramichi, and I was kind of thinking that there was somehow a connection between those two waters, bodies of water...
There isn't. The groundwater flows down deep and, remember, and they draw. It's too shallow.
Okay, okay.
And anyway, the, the furthest wells don't show any contamination, so we have it delineated in that offsite area, so it never really gets, I think it's at about a thousand feet or maybe fifteen hundred. I'm not sure, don't put me on that.
Okay, no, I'm...
Off the top of my head.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So, go ahead. So, just a couple of questions. One, how long do you expect to be monitoring the groundwater samples that you're doing periodically?
In excess of twenty years.
Okay. I think that'll be good for people in town to know since, long-term concern there.
Or longer. I mean, I, I guess until they're, until they get to the cleanup levels.
Yeah. And I would say just a tremendous job over the last ten years of really recovering that site from what was a terrible state, and I compliment you and your company on sticking through it. The other question I had, actually, are there any comments from our Conservation Committee? I see our chair sitting out in the audience, Conservation Commission, excuse me, on, on the, the work they're doing disposing of this, the soil?
Yeah, you can go first.
Well, Morris Grove Street, current chairman of the Conservation Commission, Mr. Vaneo and BASF have just been a great partner to work with. So, a lot of their work is governed by Mass DEP, which exceeds our jurisdiction, but he's kept us informed of everything, so absolutely great to work with.
Thank you. That's it for my questions.
Thank you.
It looks like our conservation agent wants to speak there.
Kevin Baldwin, Plainville Conservation Agent. I met with Aries Engineering on a site visit, I think it was in April. I don't know, the days are blending together at this point, but they showed me the overflow areas when they get down to the certain point, they were in the process of digging those out, and they explained that they would have been done with this project if it were not for Army Corps of Engineers and DEP. Because basically, someone will start the process, they'll send questions, Aries will respond, and then a year and a half later, they'll send more questions. So, it's not for lack of trying on BASF approach. And then to answer the question about the water going to Miramichi, it does, but they've done testing along the, the stream that goes across the water under Taunton Street, and they have not detected any levels or concerns along those test sites. They have a very complicated map that they showed me that shows the, you know, frequent testing. It came back clean, and then, but there are other points on that same lake that still feed into Miramichi when the dams are in place. It won't affect the water levels on Miramichi significantly. And they did just get a response recently. I, I was included on the email.
From the water quality permits?
Yeah.
Yeah, there, there has been some administrative comments back and forth, in fact, just administrative completion. There was some, they quit. We lost the tear sheet from the public notice. The paper lost the tear sheet from the public notice, so we had to kind of figure that out and get a replacement. It was lost in the mail, so.
We got that verification, I think, last week, because I was CC'd on that. But, yeah, they kept us in the loop, and, and it was very educational. I got a history lesson from the nineties. And then, I thought it was an hour meeting, and it ended up...
It's good history, though.
Yeah, and, and we do have a public facing website, and it will be updated within the next month or two with the new data.
Great.
So, you can always look at the groundwater model, and you can see the, the rings of wells that we have, ring one, ring two, ring three, that'll go out in distance, downgrade from the site and what those concentrations are. And I did have one slide to present, and, and we, we measure our progress not so much by concentration in individual wells, because they can be spotty and, and they don't, they're not representative of the whole. So, what we do is we make a calculation of what we call the mass blocks, the amount, the mass, the amount of contaminant that's going through an imaginary line across the strike, site, based on the well concentrations. And right now, we've had an eighty-six percent reduction in, in, in that mass that moves offsite and on-site. So, the, the latest rounds of, of injections of, you know, the materials that we use to destroy the contamination in place has been very effective, and, you know, we've done two rounds of polishing injections since then and have a third planned. So, we continue to spot treat those areas that aren't behaving.
I remember several years ago showing, you know, there was kind of a map, and I think you called it the plume?
Plume map, yes.
Yeah, the plume map, and we, you could see where it started and where it migrated, and you could see, you know, how much was there, and then as you treated it, how it was being reduced in size and how it was moving kind of, you know, away from the site across the street, right? Pretty much. We, in previous meetings here, we've been talking about a new well source that we've got on the other side of the, kind of, on the other side of Turnpike Lake. I don't know from a yardage perspective how far it is away, but, you know...
I don't know, but it's the, it's the right direction for us.
Yeah, so your, so your wells...
It's the right direction for us because it's up.
So, your wells are here. Turnpike Lake is here.
Right.
And all that pressure, literally, just like a water tower, pushes down and forces water through our site. So, your wells are upgrading, so there's, there's no way physically for our water to get to your wells.
The new wells in a similar, is in a similar spot to those, those wells.
Yeah, one of the concerns that was raised was that if we start to pump significant volume from that, that we could possibly affect, you know.
I doubt you would be able to reverse that flow. There's so much head pressure from the lake itself that I doubt you would reverse that flow. Your engineers did contact us and we provided whatever information they wanted on our geology and hydrogeology pump tests that we've done over the years. And our site in itself is not, doesn't, is not a potentially productive aquifer. Because we ran the tests, ran through the DEP protocols and they, they actually qualified our submissions. And we're not, we, we don't qualify as a potentially productive aquifer.
Thank you. Just wanted to bring that.
That's a good question, but that's, that gets back to the importance of continuing in monitoring for.
Absolutely, for the next two decades. Awesome. Any other questions or comments? Dennis?
Just to kind of confirm what he was talking about. I did reach out to Peter Newton, our hydrologist. And he confirmed that anything that's going on in the lake is not going to get back to our wells. That was one of my concerns, when they start digging at the bottom, how much of that is going to come back and be able to be sucked back in? Because we are groundwater under the influence. That was one of my concerns. I reached out to Peter and he confirmed that everything will fly.
And, and that's, I guess, part of why you're filtering those last six inches before you start to take them remediate?
And more importantly, the lake bottom is pretty competent. There is a, a very soft layer on top, the top six inches. After that, you get into anywhere from two to five feet of decomposed vegetation. And then even, we did some borings and you can see the grass that vertically comes up through our sample tubes. That's the original meadow that was there before it was flooded.
Wow.
So our contamination sits right above that vegetation and in that vegetative layer. So we know that when we hit that grass, we're pretty much clean. And then we would sample after that to make sure that it's confirmed that we've got.
Where does the material go that you excavate?
So it is, it goes by truck to Worcester. And then it goes by rail to Grandview, Idaho.
And what do they do with it?
It goes in landfill. Goes into, yeah. So basically, because the site had a license from the Atomic Energy Commission. And we have levels of radioactivity that are above that. Regular landfills, say in Michigan or Alabama, cannot take this material because our permits will not allow it. So it has to go to a low-level radiological facility in Grandview, Idaho and the high level.
Wow.
Wouldn't want to live there.
I mean, potatoes are better.
I don't think anybody wants to live there.
Interesting.
So we have a couple more questions. If you could just come up to the podium?
Chris DePray, High Street. Thank you for the update and the information. Jeff, I think your comment was probably, to me, the most relevant as far as the town is concerned. Like, when these have become available for sale and we have businesses and people and it's, like, they're driving across the street, we were told people could work there, but they can't live there. A bunch of different things like that. This stuff, you know, it, it could come, I mean, it doesn't grow like a tree. But I mean, it could potentially be found somewhere else. And if it does come back beyond a certain amount of time, I just want to make sure there's still a responsible party. You don't want to have it all developed out and lose businesses and different things like that. This is a great opportunity for us. So, you know, anything that we can look into prior cases where the same, you know, actions were done and it was successful and talk to the people who robbed it. I mean, that's always something you could reach out for, a case. But this is a real important site for us from a development standpoint for business and stuff. And I want the people to, in the town, to be, feel good about our water source, our new water source that's not that far away. The, the upstream thing being not a problem. Dennis, if you don't mind me asking, may I ask, Dennis a question? I'm always told that these are surface wells, but they also draw from beneath? They just strictly draw from the surface?
No. It's groundwater under the influence. So the, the lake can penetrate underground into those, that well field.
Okay, and I've always been told underground, you can't tell the direction of which way the water is flowing, right?
It's not, it's, it's down gradient. It's, it's definitely down gradient. I reached out to the hydrologist, if anybody can hear me.
But, I mean, you, I've been told many times that wells draw from water going in, you know, any direction they want underground. There's no specific direction. It's not like a topographical thing where you get the top, the layer, the land directing the water. That would be the surface law situation. But that's to keep an eye on, which we test all the time, right? And stuff. But the length of who's going to keep doing the testing will make the town feel good. And also people who are going to invest money in our town on a business standpoint will make them feel good. So that's just my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to address anything else?
Yeah, I guess to answer that question, I mean, BASF is the responsible party. And we have to provide financial assurances to US EPA for the ongoing monitoring maintenance. So to answer your question, regardless of who buys the property, we can't transfer that liability. You can try, but it, it's failed. So under, under RECPA and under later on Superfund if need be, we would always be the responsible party.
Okay. Thank you. And I think, you know, to Chris's point about, you know, where, you know, when these wells pump, where the water can come from. I think, you know, from you showing us the direction of the contaminants moving was consistent with what the hydrologist was saying about the flow in that area, which direction it tends to go.
Right. So you can tell by the way which groundwater flows by measuring the top of water elevation relative to the land surface. And you can see what we call a groundwater contour. So as, if you're at elevation two oh five and your next contour is two oh four, well, water flows downhill, so the water flows that way. And you're correct, when you pump from a well, it will draw through any place that it has a hydraulic connection to. So if, if there's fractures or a sand lens, it'll reach that. But if there is an aqua clude in between, such as a clay layer or a solid rock, it, or the fracture network is so small that it can't draw, then that stops the water from being drawn from everywhere. So it's, it is dependent upon the geology and hydrogeology. And again, the hydraulic head from Turnpike Lake prevents that water from our site going back to your wells. Because it's just that constant head pressure pushing down.
Okay. Yeah, we keep that thing.
Got a question in the back.
Yep, come on up.
Reed Webster, five Bugby Street. I've been through a few of these presentations. Thank you very much. My question would be, I think at the beginning, you said that you were getting it down to forty parts per trillion?
No, I guess I'm understanding. Twenty-five parts per million for PCVs in the soil.
Okay. And PCVs are just as dangerous as PFAS?
I don't know if I can make a statement one way or the other.
Okay. And then we know from, this is just food for thought, I'm not arguing with people, okay? We know from the OAFAM that water moves. Once we do something different with the land and if we're about to sell it, what are the chances that whatever gets built on there changes it? I mean, my experience with water is, you know, I spill it on the floor with my cleaning business and it goes everywhere. So I don't know, like, if something changes that flow that you've been talking about.
So, so the general, so the general hydrogeology, whether there has been buildings there or not, is relatively, stay relatively the same. The groundwater flow, if you look at the contours over the annual sampling over the year, hasn't changed from the nineties when the site was covered by seven acres of concrete till now, even though all that concrete has been removed. So I would say that the development would reduce the groundwater flow because you're going to have more impervious surface back than you do now.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it, sir.
Good to know. Thank you, Reed. Any other questions or any other comments?
And if you do have other questions, there's, through the website, there's a, there's a way to post questions to us, which we'll get back to you. And, you know, I'm always available. Usually people can do that.
Looks like we got one more question. He's coming up. And you want to just say what that website is for folks at home?
It's, there's a link on the, on the, on the COMCOM page.
Okay, perfect.
Ted Jansen, twenty-third Colonial Way. Mr. Chairman, I have a question. What about drought conditions if that, those have changed the hydraulics? If that, if that, what level does that lake go down that you don't have the hydraulic pressure to keep, keep everything in balance?
It, it would have to be empty. And, and I, I, I don't even think then, I've never seen it empty in, or it's never been empty. It's been fed. So I, like I said, I've never seen it empty. I, I have to, we'd have to run a model on it to see what it looked like if it ever was completely empty.
Would that be worthwhile, running? Worst, worst case scenario?
I, yeah, I'll take it back to our hydrogeologist and I will ask.
We have that. Army Corps of Engineers tested the whole site for years. And they kept all the information for all the type, potential well sites in the whole town.
They tested it as a drought condition?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, if that's something you could, you could ask about and let us know, we'd really appreciate that. You know, that's kind of the biggest concern going right now is that that's going to be the, possibly the biggest source of water and, and at the moment, cleanest. And we want to keep it that way. So is there something we should be concerned about? We'd like to know sooner than later. Absolutely.
Then the other question, and I came in late, but you said you did core samples. A lot, and a lot of your analysis and a lot of your projections are based on core sampling of the flow? You're talking about different layers and composition?
Yes.
Did you, did you do enough core samples that, you know, you didn't, you didn't core everything? Is there a chance that some of that soil composition is different in between core samples?
I think that we've pretty much pin cushioned that site thousands and thousands, hundreds of borings. We have over a hundred and forty-five wells. So, and, and again, those postex samples for the cleanup are on a ten-by-ten grid. So we have literally, I think, a thousand samples for this cleanup.
Gives me a reference. I didn't, I didn't think that two core borings and over two seven acres.
No, the postex samples just for the excavation were well over a thousand samples.
Very, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Jansen. All right. Thank you very much for your work to this point. And we have Mr. Wydak. Okay, one second. He's in, he's going to come up. Didn't want to be left out, sir.
Well, I don't want to be left out. Maggie asked my question about where it's going. Thank you, Ed. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Stan.
He's been with us for a long time.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Dan.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'd like to invite up our rep from the Plainville Lions Club. You could just come on up to the table here with the microphone. And we're going to have a quick chat about a event permit for the Zerbini Family Circus.
My name is Richard Sabins, Nine Apple Tree Drive. I've been a Lion for twenty-seven years. We've had five circuses on this property. We've had five carnivals in town. We've also had the fall festivals, many of them. We have never had a problem, never. Fire, police, thank God, nothing. Only problem we had was one of the circuses got a nine-one-one call. The camel was eating a bush in front of the library. They actually called nine-one-one. It's the only problem we've ever had. We, we want to run it up in the Field of Dreams this year. It's one day in and out. It's two shows. We have never, ever had to have fire, police. We've always covered it by what's on duty, always. Never had to hire anybody. We're a charitable organization. A hundred percent of what we make goes to this town, you know, charities. If we have to pay for fire, police and everything else, permits and everything, there's no sense doing anything. That's our only way of making money.
Impressive record. Mr. Noble, what do you have? It sounds like we then have feedback to discuss from police and fire.
Yeah, good news. Marshall, the building commissioner, has signed off on the building permit for the tent. And the circus provided all the information. He was happy. Once the tent goes up, the fire department will need to inspect. But that can be done at the time the tent goes up. Their, the fire department is requesting two detailed firefighters onsite during the, the thing. So I'd like to send you back to the fire department just to confer with them. And the police department is asking for two officers to be assigned. So would you also check into the police department?
I'd check for the police department. They want seventy-three dollars an hour on cop. You add that up.
Does. And then.
Do all, do all organizations that have anything over a hundred people, like all these ballparks up here, that you go up there and they're loaded?
If they require a permit, yes.
So you can have two hundred, three hundred people in the field, you can have the ballparks.
Because that's a designated use of the ballpark, yes.
You don't have to have a permit.
That's part of their occupancy.
Even, even though this is on town property?
Yes. Okay, and the Board of Health says that food permits have not been taken out by the circus yet. So probably want to remind them.
The guy's supposed to be here next week to go through everything, take care of all the permits.
Okay.
Either way, we lose. If we have to pay for all the details and everything else, we're not going to make any money. If we have to cancel the circus right now, which is probably what's going to have to happen, we have to pay them for whatever they've done. I mean, we've never, ever had to pay for a detail in this town for all the, everything we've done. And we put thousands of dollars a year into this town, you know, into the people, senior son of the schools, everything else. I don't see why. If you had a bad accident, you have two ambulances and everything in this town, right?
Correct.
You had a bad accidents in both accidents, both, everything was out, what would you do?
Mutual aid.
You'd call out of town. You'd call for mutual aid, right?
Correct.
What's the difference?
The difference is the town doesn't absorb the cost of details because it's a union thing.
Circus has two million dollar liability. Lions have two million dollar liability.
I, I'm going to have to drag you back to the two public safety officials. You convince them of the.
I, I put him for this back in January, right? Back in January and I never heard anything back. Now it's the last minute. Now we have to get everybody involved because everybody lost all the paperwork.
Well, I can only find a recreation commission permit, but I don't have a town permit.
Everything came in that folder because I personally delivered it.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Please.
We, we used to have police departments that a couple of the cops, Rocket and a couple others, would volunteer to stand out here and one aid because that's where all the traffic was.
So a little bit of history with the circus. There has been a circus here for quite some time. If the board recalls, community policing funding, act from the past. That's how we were able to pay for a lot of this stuff. Whether it be civic events, whether it be something else. But a lot of the policing money, grant funding is allowed to use specific event, things like this. That community, the community policing money is now essentially evaporated. It's no longer in existence. Through conversations, I didn't say seventy-two dollars an hour. That's what the detail rate is. If I can do a special event and pay overtime rate, if it's a police officer with a few years on the job that takes it, it's a much less amount of money that's associated with it. But I can't make that choice, so I have to go with the higher tier, which is a supervisor, which is a sergeant that may take that to go. The reason for the circus is not so much track record of what hasn't happened. It's what could happen. And that's what we as public safety officials look at. We don't want to plan for an event that could happen. We plan for an event that could happen, not if it's never happened. And when you put four hundred people under a tent, kind of to your point with the camel eating bushes, when you look at that same circus in New Hampshire, there were lives lost during the event.
Was this true?
I understand, but that's our point is we can't plan for that type of thing. Something can happen and we need to do that. If we don't have proper staffing on shift, we need to have proper staffing at the event. Unfortunately, that's, that's really what it comes down to. Certainly, I will try to minimize many costs that I can within my budgetary constraints. But much like I have with a lot of people that come in and ask for different events that I think are fantastic for the town, it's challenging to us to get prepared for me to know it's good and unknown number for a very large town. I give hopefully that helps. Any questions?
Yeah. I mean, I, sorry. I mean, one, one thing that you mentioned that comes up quite a bit with a lot of different events we have because this is something that I think there was a history years ago where these fees were not charged. And whether, whether we did have proper coverage or not, I guess is another question. You know, we're trying to do everything correct going forward on, on a lot of facets around here. But at the same token, we've got some, you know, fundraising events that are happening where, you know, any additional cost is, as you mentioned, is really taking out of what we have. So is there still like a volunteer pool of folks who do that or is that just not?
So to my knowledge, no officer has volunteered for this. No one suggests to have an officer volunteer. It's a violation of the CPA.
So this was grant funding that was basically washing it?
It's community policing money that, you know, came in ten thousand, fifteen thousand dollars, twenty thousand for increments to a lot of towns throughout the Commonwealth. And that's across the country. Unfortunately, now it's just, it's not available to us because other things are being funded from that money. And it hasn't existed for roughly, I'm going to say close to thirteen or fourteen years. That's, that's the real challenge.
I, I just, speaking from experience, it's, it's, we've got to figure this out. A way to make it easier somehow for our community to do things that are fun. And I, this is not your fault by any stretch of the imagination. You're trying to do your job and do it to the best of your ability and with the resources that you have. And so I don't think there's any fault to be, to be laid anywhere. You know, but I know it's too late for this year's budget. We're, we've already talked about it. It's on the warrant. We're going to town meeting, but perhaps next year we need to think about re. But perhaps next year, we need to think about re-funding that community, that community policing line that can be specifically laid out for these types of events. You know, I think that things like this are an important part of the fabric of Plainville. And to see them go by the wayside because it's too expensive to have police officers there is a shame. And it takes away from, you know, what we are as a community. And again, it's not your fault. It is what it is. But I do think it's a shame. So I, we've got, I think we need to find out a way to make it easier to do fun things.
So conversely, if staffing levels stay what they are on particular days, there may be a possibility where there may be no fees involved at all because of staffing hours. Staffing levels allow for people to work the event on shift. But if people take vacation, holidays, or things like that, that they normally wouldn't pay on overtime or anything else, you know, it's then I come out to finance committee and say, hey, by the way, these particular events have to be funded through overtime. And as we all know, we're trying to make sure that we're physically responsible going through those things.
Yeah.
It's a challenge. It's a challenge when one thing pops up. It's when now
Yeah, I know.
many things pop up over the summer, and that's the bigger hurdles.
Especially when they're concentrated in the summer.
Right. And it makes it challenging for people who are trying to do it when they don't know what the cost is gonna be.
Yeah.
We're sitting here now trying to say, can we do it? Can we not do it? It might be seventy-two dollars an hour. It might be forty-four dollars an hour. It might be zero dollars an hour.
Mind you, I'm only speaking from the police side.
Right.
When we look at fireside, they may need to rescue up there. I don't know what their actual protocol is for that logic of an event. When you look at a North Attaboro football game, North Attaboro, meaning I live there, I see the ambulance there the entire game.
Right.
So I'm assuming it's ages there. We can't watch that. So we may get to a level where you may need to rescue there. And that's what everything might be. So that's, again, you guys know the expenses maybe have.
You've got to, you go ahead.
I have some questions. When was the last year that we had the circus?
We had a circus here just before COVID, the last year before COVID.
Eighteen or two thousand nineteen?
Somewhere around there. Yep.
Well, we broke ground on this building in seventeen, so.
Yeah. My next question was, where was that last circus? Because it wasn't, so it was before two thousand seventeen?
All the circuses have been right on this property. Two of you people built my building over there.
No, I'm just trying to make sure.
You could have left it hollow. I could have used the building.
I'm just trying to make sure we have our facts down. So it was at least two thousand seventeen, maybe even sooner than that. How many people attended that circus?
They had two shows and about, I think, at least three hundred people a show.
Three hundred people per show?
Yeah.
I remember taking my kids.
I was walking around the circus out of Florida.
I remember taking my kids here when they were little to at least one show, and we had a lot of laughs.
I can remember, I can remember coming, but it's been a long time since I was here.
By the way, while we're on, Mr. Saban's reputation is stellar, and he's a tremendous volunteer for this community. Puts a lot of himself on the line for this community. So we'll do what we can to make it a reality for him.
And how many hours are we talking about for the details?
I don't have those numbers.
It's a minimum for four.
It's a minimum four hours.
I mean, just to cover two circus shows, we could be talking six or eight, I would think.
Do you know what time the events are set for?
I think the first show is five o'clock and the other is seven o'clock. I'm not positive, but I think the two ones. If you have any questions, you can call Menden. They've had that show for, I don't know, ten years, maybe. And they can tell you whatever problems they have or anything. I've talked to the Lions up there, and they've never had a problem with it.
Yeah, I mean, from my perspective, we've got a, you know, we've got chiefs in these departments for a reason. And we've, you know, from my perspective, need to take their vice seriously. Not only for, you know, for a number of reasons, safety obviously being the first and foremost, but not to mention liability and all that. You know, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the application and waive at least the fee for the Plainville Lions, the Zerbini Family Circus event permit at Field of Dreams on July eleventh, twenty twenty-four, subject to conditions as outlined today by the board, which is further discussion with both police and fire to find a, you know, the most cost-effective way to make this a reality.
So moved.
Satisfactory resolution of police and fire chief concerns.
Before we vote on this, any questions?
Yes. My name's Reed Webster. I'm at Bugby Street. I'm a local businessman here in town. I just spoke to the chief, and I would be willing to pay for one of the police officers for the five and a half hour period up to seventy-two dollars. If you can maybe get them to use their revolving account for the other police officer, that would be awesome. Kind of like a matching grant.
Very generous, Mr. Webster. Thank you very much.
That's fabulous.
I too will pay for a police officer.
All right.
Wow.
Now you got three cops.
That's the most playful thing I've ever seen, folks.
Seriously.
Thank you very much. That's great.
I'm taking mine back, too.
Walkway, walkway.
All those in favor?
This isn't poker now.
All those in favor? All right. Thank you. Absolutely.
That was fabulous. That was fabulous.
That was great. All right, with that, we'll return to some sort of normalcy on our agenda. I wanted to go through many of the folks that were in the room here in case they had to move on to other things, the folks that had to present. So, Mr. Noble, can we back up to announcements, please?
Certainly.
At seven fifteen.
The police chief reminds us that for the Malia music Celebration of Life event that will be held on June twenty-second, from, this is difficult, fifteen hundred hours to twenty-three hundred hours, that the event includes a five K road race starting at sixteen hundred hours. Various activities at the Field of Dreams included the fireworks display. Significant traffic and crowd management measures will be in place to ensure the safety and security of participants and spectators. No parking signs will be posted on Cowell Street, Everett Skinner, George School, Highland Grove, Pleasant Spring, Broad, Winter Green Lane, and Charlene Lane. Road closures include School Street at George. The entire event is open to School Street residents outside of the race and the fireworks event. School Street at Highland Avenue, the entire event is open to School Street residents outside of the race and the firework event. And road closures sixteen hundred hours to the end of the race on George Street at Washington Street, Everett Skinner Road, Cowell Street, and Dorothy Lane. Vehicle traffic will be allowed for residents only outside of these specific event restrictions. I'll keep that in the file so we can announce that again.
And we've got to like send out, send out, send out, send out. We got to communicate, communicate, communicate that one.
Email blast, perhaps.
Also, the Board of Health has sent over a notice to us that they are looking for a community volunteer to serve on the Institutional Biosafety Committee. This committee is comprised of a minimum of five members that reviews, approves, and oversees projects in accordance with responsibilities as defined by the National Institute of Health Guidelines and meets approximately four times per year. As you know, that this is a local bylaw that in particular Thermal Fisher has to comply with. So the person serving on the Biosafety Committee will have tremendous interface with Thermal Fisher and the Board of Health. Our last representative was hired by Thermal Fisher. So we have to replace him. I think that'd be a conflict. I think that's all I have.
Okay. What about committee and board?
Certainly, I'd just like to remind you all, committee and board vacancies that come up in June will need, we will be reaching out to the committee members by email, make sure that they wish to be renewed, that we get that information back. If someone doesn't wish to be renewed, then we'll be posting not only the fact that there's a vacancy up, but in fact, we will post the vacancies no matter what. But I'll make sure the board is informed of those that are interested in renewal. But that's in June, and everybody's on an appointed board and committee. That's what we have to do.
This is the first meeting after town meeting is to go everyone announced the vacancies. Everyone didn't want to come back.
We have plenty of opportunities for service to the community.
Excellent. Let's see. Let's see. Next is five-one, our five-year financial projections.
Sure. This is a lot more difficult without the...
Want to give that one more attempt?
I'll try it. It sees the fact that there's another monitor, but it doesn't see. Oops. Thank you, Dennis. You don't have to hold it. Sort of interesting because it's only a blue screen until I plug it in. It is a blue screen. I plug it in. It goes black. I don't understand. Let's try it on that end.
Okay, yeah, just to see if it's a cable issue.
Can you switch this?
I just did. Yep.
It didn't work on mine either.
Well, we may have strummed what the problem is.
Look at that.
I don't know why, but hey.
You did it.
Let me see if I can do this for you, Julie.
Yeah. It's on our shared drive as a PDF, just so it's easy there. I can kind of start. So Brian's bringing up, this is gonna be kind of like a basic summary financial projection tool. I update it as we go along with town meeting, as different items kind of come up. But this is basically going to give our FY twenty-five budget for revenues and expenses. And then we look at projecting out five years with different variables just to try to see where our over-under is for the end of each year. So some of the top items, I don't know.
I don't know. That was a PDF. I just have it as an Excel.
That's not the right one, then.
Not the right one? Okay.
Yeah. In the Brian to Julie folder, it should be at the top as a PDF.
Nice job.
The, and I'm gonna preface this by saying this is a tool. These are estimates. Obviously, things change on a monthly basis sometimes. So this is not going to be what you will actually see when we hit FY thirty or even FY twenty-six. But again, it's a tool that I use and that I think we'll be bringing up more often when we're looking at things like potential debt exclusions to cover the tri-county assessment, for instance. So the top, this whole first section is all of the revenues. The orange highlighted column is what we have budgeted for FY twenty-five. We'll work on sharing this so that people can look at it after the fact as well, as long as you don't hold me to exact numbers a year from now. So the top part is your tax levy. So again, you're looking at basics, your two and a half increase. New growth, you know, we have estimated three fifty for FY twenty-five. I plugged in some higher numbers for the next two years, just as an estimate with a few of the projects that are going on between the town square and potential with Market Basket. Again, this could change, so that's kind of highlighted in blue in FY twenty-six and twenty-seven. Our current debt exclusion is plugged in right now. And you'll see in FY twenty-seven, it cuts drastically. And that's due to the KP debt coming off at the end of FY twenty-six, where we definitely have some room to absorb some of that levy that would be lost there. So I have the levy limit total. I have the levy ceiling, which is based on the full value of the town as a whole, and that's a number that we can't go over. We have a really healthy difference between our levy limit and our ceiling, which is great. If you go down, the next section is your local receipts. So the columns E and, the second and third columns, you'll see there's percentages for increase and decrease between FY twenty-four's recap and twenty-five. So you can have an idea of what the budget difference is between those years. And then the next column, where for instance on this one, it says one percent, that is a percentage that I have projected out for twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine. If I change one of those figures on my spreadsheet, it'll change the years going forward. So what I have projected out is very conservative, one percent increase for local receipts. Our current increase is only three point four six, so we're pretty close there. Cherry sheets, our current increase is only two point oh two percent. I've plugged in a one percent, again, being conservative, although probably close to actual on those. And then we have our other sources, which the first one is kind of the, it's throwing a little bit of the numbers off. I might pull it out and make it its own separate piece. But it's our free cash. So obviously, from twenty-four to twenty-five, we got lower, a lower amount of free cash certified. So it makes our revenues look like they're lower. And I have it at one point eight going forward. That amount that's plugged in on that line matches what we have further down for expenses. So the number evens out, but it does skew a little bit of the percentages. Other available funds, the number that's plugged in there, the two one sixty eight three eight for twenty-five, that's the amount that is transferred from gaming stabilization to cover our debt. That's covered by the Plainridge Casino. The numbers that are projected out there are the actuals based on that debt as it goes out through FY twenty-nine or FY thirty. Oh, yeah, you guys can see that full column, FY thirty. And then enterprise indirect costs, again, I plugged in a two and a half percent increase on those just as a placeholder. And then at the bottom here, we have the enterprise funds. I plugged in, I plugged in some different numbers for those based on, actually, sorry, these are the revenues. So these numbers here are matching what I have that's further below in the expenses. So these all will net out to zero with the expenses as well. So you'll see our grand total for revenues across the years. Again, it's an estimate that is very subject to change. If you go to the next page, so the expenses. Here you'll see these are our budgeted for twenty-five, and you'll see most of them are at two percent. For our general government, the yellow highlight is that free cash number that matches the amount that's up in the top. Again, I might pull those out separately just so that they don't mess any of the numbers up. But what I plugged in here is the two percent increase on expenses for the general fund. Public safety, I had a few police, fire, ambulance that were a six percent, just keeping with what is typical for a public safety increase in expenses year over year. Public works, highway and facilities had a four percent increase plugged in. Other items are two. Again, just trying to put basic numbers in there that typically match what we see in those categories. If you go to the next page. So then I have some fixed costs listed here. We have our retirement of debt, so those numbers are plugged in as actual. I have a line in there because, again, this is a tool that I'm using. The water treatment facility debt, if it's approved at the fall town meeting now. And again, we talked about a third from the general fund. So right now I have that zeroed out, but that's a line that I was playing with before when we were looking at it for this town meeting. And it's something that we'll be looking at when we have that fall town meeting. You'll see a lot of the percentages for... You'll see a lot of the percentages for some of these fixed costs, like health insurance, I have as a five percent. Five percent could be conservative. We've seen a lot of other communities that have been hit with closer to ten percent increases in health costs. So again, plugging in a number that feels like it's probably close to what we'll actually have, but it can change at any point. So these are our fixed costs plugged in. And then below that is school, I believe. Let's see. Education is right below that. So you'll see I plugged in a four percent increase as an estimate for the schools. And there's where the tri-county assessment is listed in blue. You can go down a little bit. There we go. FY twenty-six, we get hit with our first piece of that assessment, which is nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars for twenty-six and twenty-seven. It goes up to one point one for the next two years, and then one point two where it kind of settles. This number is also a variable, depends on the percentage of our, our assessment based on the number of students from Plainville. And so that's the number that we plug in is what we have right now for our percentage. But I mean, that could change slightly depending on the number of students. That's a huge number to absorb in a matter of a year, and that's why I was pulling this up and working with Brian to bring this before people now. Because we need to start coming up with a plan of how we want to cover whatever deficit we may have in future years. Before I get into that a little bit more, I think we have another page with some more, Brian. So these are just enterprise, these are the enterprise funds. Water, I did a two percent for salaries, a four percent for expenses. I did that basically across the board for the different enterprise funds. I plugged in the debt service for the current debt that we have for water. And again, I have a line in blue for if the water treatment facility gets approved, where we can plug in some sample numbers and see how that impacts the water enterprise fund as well. Sewer, trash. And so these numbers, the numbers for the expenses here match what we have for revenues up top, because the enterprise ones have to cover themselves. So if you go down a little bit more, Brian, we'll have other expenditures, which is basically our cherry sheet assessment, our overlay, and our transfers to cover our portion of the indirect costs back to the enterprise funds, which all have two and a half and then a two percent increase. So if you go a little bit further down, you'll see what we're looking at for estimates. So obviously FY twenty-five, we have it level funded. So there's a zero for the budget gap. For FY twenty-six, we're at minus six hundred and sixty-five thousand. It goes to one point one million in FY twenty-seven, one point six million deficit in FY twenty-eight, a little over two million in FY twenty-nine. And then we cut it slightly in FY twenty, FY thirty. In FY thirty, we're anticipating some relief on the pension assessment, since our unfunded liability comes off, or it's, it's supposed to come off in FY thirty. And it could be a pretty significant number for the town of Plainville. And right now, our financial policies indicate that we should look at using some of that money to fund OPEB. But it is a significant amount that we could also look at taking some of it and helping to apply towards some of this deficit that we'll have, or, you know, toward the tri-county assessment or any of the other debt that we may come across in the meantime. Again, this is all forecasting. The numbers are not going to be exactly this when we come across the budget for FY twenty-six. But it's meant to be an eye-opener for people that that nine hundred thousand dollar assessment is really going to impact our overall budget for next year. And I know we've talked about not wanting to cut back on services, and so here we are, just kind of starting out the conversation of how we want to look at funding the budget going forward.
Thank you for putting this together. You know, as I, former member of the FinCom, as I scan through our percentage increases year over year, I find, you know, and I know, and then in the past couple of years, we've had, had some significant increases because we were bringing back services that were lost.
We've had significant increases, particularly prior to the six-man shifts. Education has increased beyond the rate of inflation. But we've been able to manage some of it by capturing some savings, most notably in healthcare, where we saved a million dollars. So first, there are still, we've been very lucky in the sense that the state aid has been, had been going up, now it's leveling off. Our new growth that kicked in, particularly thermal fissure starting earlier than we had really anticipated, helped us. But unfortunately, the unforeseen, which is tri-county, that's something that I'm very concerned about, because it wasn't foreseen in a reasonable period of time. And we do have some wiggle room, if you will, because you could go back and, and try to reauthorize the debt exclusion that's coming off, and that could give us some relief. But I think, to be honest with you, that I've run the face cloth out about as much as I can in terms of big ticket items, in terms of saving money and renegotiating. We've done electricity, we've done healthcare, we've been pretty good with our unions being cooperative as well. But unfortunately, I don't know, as I've got many more places to go. We do have some new growth. I think the projections for new growth are conservative. I'm hoping, but hope is not a strategy. Thinking that we have new growth opportunities with Jeff Kitty's project, with the thermal fissure project, and one or two others that are still talking to us, but haven't come to fruition, or haven't come up with a timeline. But I think it's important that we start looking forward. Julie's, Crystal Wall is a little cloudier than mine. But I, I like the conservative approach, because it gives us an opportunity to think about what we want to do and how we want to address these issues if they come forward. I think it's also important to demonstrate, and as we have to the board in the past, that our financial practices have changed dramatically since they were originally adopted. That caused the cutbacks. So I, I think at a certain point, there's an opportunity to go back to the, to the public and say, here's what it is. Now you get to make a choice. I think at a minimum, we get the debt exclusions reauthorized, so that we at least have that. That doesn't change anybody's taxes. That could be a plus. And then I think, as we've discussed in the past, there's always a little belt tightening we can do, but I cannot save my way to these numbers.
Yeah.
One other kind of variable that we've been going back and forth on is the KP assessment. I know we brought this up at recent meetings with the newcomers, with how the state aid is looking at reimbursing us potentially for the additional families. I know there's a lot going on with Norfolk. So those percentage numbers for KP could really swing one way or the other drastically for us this year. It was about seven hundred and ninety-five thousand. So it's a, it's a bigger ticket item that could impact us positively going forward. But again, like Brian said, there's, there's no guarantee on it, so we're not going to plan for it, but that, that could be one other item that might help us.
Well, that one item would wipe out the entire shortfall in FY twenty-six.
Yeah, well, let's, we'll break that down a little bit. Newcomers didn't cost seven hundred and eighty-one. Newcomers cost about two hundred and fifty thousand. So I want to be very clear, you know, how much of that is our growth?
Gotcha.
The number of students. Their slight increase in their budget wasn't unreasonable, their increase. It's hard to fight them when they are fiscally conservative as well. But the seven hundred and eighty-six thousand is not all newcomers.
It's not all, though.
So again, newcomers accounted for?
About a quarter.
Two hundred and sixty-two thousand.
Sixty-two. Still a big number.
Not that okay.
By the way, that also.
And that's not.
Hotel tax that disappeared. So we're going to, we are fighting this.
Yep, we have the letters.
As you sent letters to our delegation.
Yep, I got a call today from a phone on that, that he got the letter and he's on it. You know, a couple of other things, you know, we control the contracts with police and fire, and, you know, the last round of negotiations has been done by our, by the town directly. The round prior to that, I, I had worked on, I think Jeff, you would, you had worked on even prior to that maybe, but, you know, one of the things that we were always pretty clear about is that we're putting together something, we need to look at the total cost of the contract, and we really have to stay as close to that two, two and a half number as possible. And again, it's not always possible, but, but putting in a, and I appreciate your conservative nature, but, you know, what, you know, do we have the true cost of those contracts plotted out? And?
Well, all of those contracts come up for negotiation next year, starting with at least in September. So we'll be able to get a better handle on it. What she's referring to is the, the run cost of public safety statistically across Commonwealth, which includes increased costs in uniforms, and, you know, even simple things like firearms. Does not include the cost of cruisers, which is still coming out of our capital budget. But everything else in addition to payroll, training goes up, radios cost more.
But payroll drives us.
Yes.
Yeah, payrolls.
Payroll drives us.
Payrolls are the main factor.
Eighty-five percent of the budget is payroll.
Yeah, and I mean, you know, i- if, if the real number works out anywhere near six percent, I'm pissed and I need to be back in that room.
Well, I don't believe that that was referring specifically to payroll.
Well, it's a massive portion of their budget, and we, you know, we had the Plainville Public Schools in here at three percent or two point eight percent or whatever the heck it was this year. Doing it, three point one six percent. So, I mean, they're doing their part, and I expect every department to be, to be pulling that weight. So to see, I mean, and I get it, it's conservative, we're trying to plan, and that's what this is, but this is a, by no means my roadmap that we're going through here, at least that's where I stand. I mean, I think that's, those are big numbers to plug in here, you know, and to get these down to what I would think is, I'd love to see multiple scenarios, you know, frankly. I mean, I get it, if this is the conservative one, that we've got to be prepared just in case, okay, let's have a plan for this.
Be happy to, the spreadsheet that she has developed, change one thing, it'll change it for you.
Yeah.
So I was delighted to share that with you so that you could play and see, you can, could invent any scenario and it will be calculated.
Right, right.
It's world.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, this is, it's a, it's a great tool, it's a great, it's great to see this plan. You know, I immediately jumped to the last page and want to figure out those red numbers real quick, and I want to know how much of them are, are, are real problems or problems that might happen, right? Problems we already know about, problems that could happen, anything could happen. What do we have confidence in?
The thing that would change the paradigm, change the whole goal, would be tri-county. I need some help with tri-county. That's a big number. And if you'd ask me to do a five-year projection prior to tri-county, these would look a hell of a lot better.
Yeah, I mean, we, we're fortunate, we experienced a tremendous amount of new growth going forward. We need to do everything we can do to, you know, get, get some more of these projects online and try to attract new projects to happen in town to take care of some of this, this buffer. So we'll do everything we can for that, you know, on that perspective as well. But I mean, for sure, controlling expenses to make sure that we're half of some of these, these numbers, I think, goes a long way in reducing this bottom-line number. And of course, if you get some money back from the state, that's a big chunk as well. Any other thoughts or questions from the board?
When you talk about reissuing the debt, that is going to.
Re-issu.
Re- reauthorizing. And when you talk about.
So what you're asking is a debt exclusion?
Correct.
That's wrong and all.
Yep.
So we have to go back to the tummy, back to the throat.
Okay.
And ask them to reauthorize that same level.
To be used towards.
So it would be, I mean, is that considered a debt exclusion?
It is.
It is a debt exclusion.
It would be a new debt exclusion towards.
All right, it's just the wording sounds a little soft.
I think the point was.
Right, it, I, no, I understand, yes.
We've got this much debt exclusion, we actually have three debt exclusions that either come off or about to come off.
Okay.
And that one approach to dealing with this gap would be to, you know, we'd go back to the voters and say, we're not asking for more, we're asking for the same that we did for another school project, just roll it into.
Move it from this project to a different project.
I think, I think it's a good start. I got about a dozen questions I wrote down, all out, so Julie and I will get some nice time together on that.
And can I just clarify, this does not include the water treatment plant?
It does not.
That's a zero there.
So that's a big.
I left the lines blank on those.
Right, right, and that, that, so that, I'm kind of making a point. That's another big, big, big thing hanging out there. And I, I mean, like, I feel like this is an eye-opener to everyone.
Can I make one comment, just back on the debt exclusion? It's, it's really important to keep, you want to always try to keep everything as level as possible and not go like this when you're, you know, trying to keep your, your budget balanced and you're looking at taxes for people. When that debt exclusion in twenty, after twenty-six to for twenty-seven comes off, people's taxes could go down, and then all of a sudden, if you reauthorize a debt exclusion after that, they could go way up. We don't want to do that, we want to make life affordable for people and as level as possible. So it's a lot better financially to keep that debt exclusion about the same as it has been, so we can kind of keep riding like this for people instead of like that. Because that's where you're really going to hurt the taxpayers. If you have one year of relief where it comes off and you didn't refill it, that next year is really going to hit people hard.
I, I guess, but my counter to that would be that if people put our trust in us and we say, this is a debt exclusion and it's going to fall off when the project is done, then I feel like we have to follow through on our promises. And I mean, I wasn't involved in that promise when the ti, when it was that time, but if people voted for it, understanding that it would fall off, it's just something to be cognizant of.
And it will fall off. And I think what the point is, is, and it just so happens that this tri-county vote happened at the same year that it comes off, so it's actually, it's a benefit to us in that we could be looking for a, a new debt exclusion, which we will be looking for a new debt exclusion for that project. And the amount would be much higher. I think the idea is if we could buffer that cost by backfilling what goes away, maybe that's a way to keep things more level.
And I also don't think it's, it, it's crazy to ask for a debt exclusion for a project that the town voted for, knowing it was going to cost so much money. I mean, I don't think that's.
One hundred percent.
That's.
You want it, you got it.
No, I don't.
Yep, I could not agree more.
Anyway, to finish up, I'm sorry.
I'm done, yep.
So it's a, it's a good start, but there, we need to push on a lot of these numbers, because we, we can be smarter about some of them. Some of them, I think I have some questions, a couple in particular, that will swing some things, but it's, I mean, if, if your eyes weren't open before, they need to be open now, that, that tri-county and the potential water treatment plant are, are not in our current budget. And, and we need to figure out a plan, and it's going to take some work and to, to, to fund that. And some of it's going to be maybe getting better new growth, some of it's going to be some other income things, some of it might be figuring out a debt exclusion option for people in town. But as, as Mr. Kelly said, they asked for the school, they got the school, we got to figure out how to pay for the school.
All right, the board has asked their questions. Is there anyone that would like to come up to that podium?
Christopher. So the debt exclusion, the schools are coming off in twenty-six?
Yeah, FY twenty-six is the last year of that payment for the debt exclusion, so it comes off in twenty-seven.
And that is, if we bring it back to the town, is that a two-thirds or a majority? If with another project.
A debt exclusion is a two-thirds, right, Brian?
Sorry?
Debt exclusion is two-thirds.
Two, uh, two-thirds of town meeting.
Yeah.
Majority of the ballot.
And that's with the, obviously, something to roll it over into, right, a project.
Oh, yeah, a debt exclusion.
Either that, or you just give back tax money, which.
Absolutely.
Right. Which never happens. The free cash. Is there an amount of money that we have used in free cash towards revolving expenses that are in our total budget? I see free cash, in my own eyes, almost being a big part of the money that might have been in there, correct me if I'm wrong, went into the new capital, capital.
Yes, we have put money aside in capital stabilization, general stabilization, OPEB stabilization. So I, I think we've done a very good job pushing money into our savings accounts.
So free ca, free cash is an expenditure as the town votes, and that is. So free ca- free cash is an expenditure as the town vote, and that is a majority or two-thirds?
Free cash is a majority vote.
And coming out of the stabilization, capital sta- stabilization fund, is that going up in front of the town, or is that just a?
Goes to town meeting only, and is a majority vote from a capital stabilization or dedicated stabilization account.
Yeah.
You took it from general stabilization with two-thirds vote.
Okay, so you're just improving the odds on this, the capital stabilization of a passing vote. You don't usually put up articles you don't want to pass.
Correct.
I mean, just, call me silly for that one. So the retirement or debt, or debt exclusion, school. Now, school enrollment showed up the new people that were brought into town. That's, isn't that anticipated to drop?
I don't have the, the numbers, it depends upon what our, what the growth in the community is.
Yeah.
But the direct answer to the question is the population has leveled off, it's now climbing back up. So our KP number increased because our student count at KP went up. So I haven't seen this dramatic, you know, tidal wave of children leaving. In fact, our enrollment numbers have been relatively consistent, but I would refer you to the school department for precise numbers.
So I guess I'm just trying to find out how much of, over the past two years since, or let's call it since COVID, that we actually used free cash money towards what we could and probably should consider revolving expense within a department.
Not so much revolving, but reoccurring.
Reoccurring.
Okay, I mean, I like your, your terminology, I just want to make sure that there's a difference between revolving and reoccurring.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have used things like, we purchased the police cruisers out of free cash. And the justification that I use, Chris, is that if we got into a budget crunch, what's the first thing you jettison? These things.
Capital items.
Capital items, so that's what you would do.
And where are we at with the free cash now, are we still at five percent?
Uh, right now, it's, I think about five percent, just a little plus or minus.
For what was certified.
Yeah.
That we're using this year, um, yeah, I think, I think we keep it between five and eight percent.
Okay, how much did we use, do we have a cap for that free cash? Because I'm looking at the capital, I'll lay, and it says free cash, shoo, all the way down.
We're using all of the free cash, but if you look, some of the free cash is going into stabilization accounts.
Right, because.
Correct, so we're using it all.
Yeah, I can see.
One way or the other.
I guess one of my concerns is, like, the free cash is not going to be available all the time.
If they budget right, it will be. If they budget it right.
Well, I mean, when, when Brian says we, we're making up for last round, damn, you are making up for last round, you know?
Well, they had excess, but I, I think.
Reston.
The DLS recommends that we.
Mr. Janson, thank you.
All right.
You got it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Dupree, Mr. Janson.
Sorry, Chris.
No problem, discussion through.
Ted Janson, twenty-three, Colonial Way, thank you for putting us together, this has been very important for me to see the future. I think what happened to us, I've been here eighteen years, it was very disappointing to see those cuts in 2020, and I, I didn't like that we said, we didn't know what was going to happen, it seemed like a surprise. None of these numbers can surprise anybody anymore. As we get closer, they'll get, they'll get better estimates understood, and I appreciate this, the five-year look. So I keep hearing Tri-County and I hear the water treatment plant. If we were to have to bor- um, we're going to have to borrow to pay for probably both of them, we're going to have to, we're going to have to pay the Tri-County assessment one way or the other. If we did not do a debt exclusion override on Tri-County, can the town finance persons tell me how much that would cost us per year approximately, our assessment? Tri-County's in the building.
Say it again? Uh, yeah, it's, we covered that, it's six, you have it right, Tri-County.
I didn't, I didn't catch what you asked.
A Tri-County number.
The Tri-County assessment, which is paying for the new building, is that in your spreadsheet?
Yeah, it's nine, nine hundred a year, just about.
Nine hundred a year, okay.
That's one point two. It goes to one point two.
Where is it, let's just get to the right number.
Yeah, so the first year for FY twenty-six, it's nine hundred.
Blue line.
I'll give you the exact number, I'm just doing it too.
And we just saw it, Tri-County, nine hundred and twenty thousand is what we have in here for the first year and second year.
Yep.
One point one in year three, four, one point two in year five.
And so that one point two is, is that, they, they were borrowing in phases, so that one point two is their final borrowing? So that number would stay for?
Once the building's occupied, permitted, that, you know, the final cost.
It would be adjusted for.
Again, yeah, adjusted for enrollment, so it could go up or down depending on how many students are at Tri-County from our town. And, and between the other towns as well.
Yeah, it's a, it's a recac- I mean, this is an estimate in that, I always thought it would be about a million a year. And you said that this is included in your bottom line?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And then what you, did you, did you say you did not include the water treatment facility?
It's not in here right now.
Do we have an idea how much we're going to have to borrow for that, and how much that payment might be annually?
Um, it's going to be about a million dollars, I think.
Depends on what our split is.
And then, and then it would be split.
Between the enterprise and the general fund?
Yeah.
That still kind of rolls.
Repairs and taxpayers.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it'd, it'd be about a million dollars a year.
And.
And, and again, those are early numbers, so we'll talk about this when we talk about the water treatment plant. That's looking at if we had twenty-five million in total, I know we have an SRF loan that might be zero percent interest, it might have some principal forgiveness. We have the PFAS litigation that we're in the middle of, that we might get a decent settlement from. We have capital articles for water that have closed out, that we might, we will be able to apply some of that money to offset the cost. So there are other positives to that that could lower those numbers, but.
None of those are.
Unavoidable worst-case scenario.
But tho- that payment is not in the spreadsheets, right?
Nope.
So potentially, we're looking at more red.
Absolutely.
If, if things don't work out.
Correct, yeah, so that's something, again, that's a project that's not been voted on yet, and if it passes, it'll be something the town wants, and then the town will.
Decide how.
Pay for it, correct.
Yeah, I understand that.
Yep.
Is there anything else on the, any major items that, you know, obviously, there's a lot of things here and there you could have, you know, missed something, but is there anything big that you see that is not included in these spreadsheets?
Not that I definitively know of, I think.
Well, we have two school roofs, kind of, about two million bucks apiece. The state will, they use the current formula from the state, the state will pay for forty percent of.
Has KP schools come to you with their capital yet?
Our schools.
That's our schools, okay.
Our schools.
And so that's my next question, does KP come to you with what their?
KP has been telling us that they're going to be doing a roof study, and they're talking two or three years from now.
Okay.
But we're, we're looking at, within two years, we're going to have, we're going to do a roof study, just funding a town meeting for ours, and then we are eligible the minute the old, the youngest roof turns twenty-five, then we're eligible for SBA funding. You always get turned down the first year you apply, you apply the second year and you got a good shot. But right now, SBA funding is only at about forty percent. So unless the state, you know, picks up to their original promise of fifty percent or better.
The burden comes back onto the towns, right? More than, okay. My concern, just to go on record, my concern is the King Philip School District capital requirements. I know they have their plumbing issues, and I know that roof is not new.
They are warning us of our roofs.
And that's not necessarily baked into here either. Thank you very much, thanks for putting this together.
Thank you. The other thing I just want to bring up is that, and, and this is, it's a good thing that we've been doing this, but in the last couple of budget cycles, we've been pretty darn conservative about adding money into the budget for unexpected needs, you know, the energy reserves and special ed reserves and other reserve funds that we never had before, because we, we had, you know, the revenue to put in place so we didn't get surprised in, in the future. I mean, some of that money is, is doing what it's supposed to do, it's still available, but I think, you know, as inflation hopefully settles down and things hopefully start to normalize, some of these massive spikes and swings we've seen the last few years, I mean, again, hope's not a strategy, but I think as we get closer in these calendar years, we, I think, need to take a closer look at how much we're reserving versus how much we need to be applying to things we know are happening in that calendar year, I just wanted to say that. Mr. Wydeck?
Uh, yes, everybody is putting a lot of emphasis on Tri-County and making it the bad guy. But unfortunately, no, I mean, unfortunately, Tri-County is a good school, and the fact is that there's bigger towns that have more revenue coming in, like North Attleboro, Franklin, they're the towns that can distribute the cost of that. I think we're number three on Tri-County, but we're a small town, so that makes it look harder.
Yeah.
But please don't, Mr. Noble, please don't.
I don't think we vilify it, I think we just tell the truth.
Okay.
Yeah, don't, by no means, it's, it's just the issue of the day.
The issue of the debt, which I understand. But at the same time, it's because we're a smaller town and a lot of kids go to Tri-County.
Yeah.
I'm like thirteen.
Go to Tri-County.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we kind of, we knew this going into it, so, I mean, it's exactly what we thought would happen has happened.
It's also to be expected, if the town voted for Tri-County, I would assume they expect to pay for it.
Exactly, and I expect Mr. Noble and Hugh Lee to watch the finances and be very frugal on the money, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, please.
Just, just to expand on that, so this is, you know, I've been working on a lot of things, getting the budget ready. This is something that I've done on the side as well, but once we get through town meeting, I'll be able to have more time to drill into the twenty-six, FY twenty-six numbers. You know, right now, we have a lot of projections plugged in, the six percents for public safety, for instance. But once we get through town meeting, my plan is to go through with the department heads and see what, what are we actually looking at? We'll be starting the budget process earlier, I think, just through the essence of clear of, putting everything out there earlier for people, for, you know, the select board, the incumbents look at. We need to get numbers on there earlier, so my goal is to fine-tune some of those numbers and see what they really look like, instead of just having, you know, a blanket, you know, percent increase across the board, because I agree, I think, I think for me, I wanted you to realize that, you know, a six hundred thousand dollar difference isn't like a hundred thousand, where you're like, oh, we could make up for that pretty easily. It's going to take some work to do, and then, again, when you look at those future years, we see that number increase with the Tri-County assessment going up, but we'll be working to fine-tune it. I would love to find a way to have this be accessible for people to look at without also attacking me for every number, but as we update everything, that we can, you know, kind of share those updates as well, so, that's the goal.
Yes, thank you very much for putting this together.
Are you just super cool?
Yep, come right up.
Julie, this is, well, ready, but Julie, for you, I attended this, well, me and Tom attended this meeting about the state and their budgets and what they're going to be giving out for money. And basically FY twenty-six is gone. I mean, it's, there's zero money that's going to be passed out, that isn't already committed to whomever they've committed what to. They're hoping in twenty-seven, they're going to resume new projects and for all kinds of different things. We didn't even get out of the Boston area, they're drawing closer to Boston on that. And just to let you know, that was from the state to them, and the word that we listed to, that's not something I'm making up. So just keep that in mind, FY twenty-six, if you're looking for state money, anything new?
You mean like grants, is that what you're talking about?
Anything new?
Unrestricted government aid is supposed to be reduced next year.
Okay.
We've also seen some cuts in gaming revenue, they're not sharing, Julie picked this up. We're thinking a hundred and fifty thousand dollars Senate bill.
The Senate budget, the House budget and governor's budget are different.
Don't get me wrong, but the Senate logic actually is pretty good.
Part of our local receipts, we get money for our local share of racing taxes. It's about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year, and the governor had that included in his budget, the House had it included in their budget, but the Senate just released their budget and they zeroed out that line, not just for Plainville, but for the other five, I think, communities.
Boston, Revere.
Everyone who had that line.
Horses.
Horse racing.
They zeroed that, that revenue stream out for all of those communities that had the line.
The Senate budget.
The Senate budget, so, you know.
We have to watch.
To be determined.
So, because Julie's discovery, I called Boston, they didn't even know about it. So, we're not very effective legislatively, we've just marked on the we are, but Boston is, and Boston hadn't caught it. So we've elevated the, up a little bit because they've, they lose a half million dollars. So that's real money to them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Since you guys are looking outlook, I mean, like, we were looking because of the, the rail trail, and we were attending that meeting because of that, or any new projects, it wasn't just rail trails and stuff, it was circuit and different, new stuff, and Jeff would probably be able to back up on the same. There's not going to be new money for new projects FY twenty-six. If we're, we're already on the books for our tip and all that stuff, but for new projects and stuff. And I, you know, I've been, as I've been attending, looking for really these new things that come out that could affect us and help us, there hasn't been a, a ton, I mean, we're already in the midst of like two or three different things with our town, using, you know, circuit as it is, but I just wanted to give you the heads up.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Come on up.
So first and foremost, I'd like to read Webster on Bugby Street. I'd like to address the idea that the town voted for something and it's up to them to pay for a debt exclusion override. I think that this board had an obligation before that vote, and they have an obligation before the next vote on the water treatment plant, to make a recommendation of how it might be paid for, and you passed on that a few weeks ago. So if you're going to, I know there's going to be a, a sales show for the next three or four months, and I think that should be done as part of it, and I'll address that when we get to the water treatment plant. What I wanted to ask about is how does the money that we have in savings, for lack of a better term, play into this budget? So, my thinking is, you know, the way I run my business is certainly not the way it is this, it's not the way any other dollar amount of money, but I think it was six point one million dollars was certified two weeks ago, that we had in cash at the end of last year's budgets, right?
Can you include in the enterprise fund?
Yeah, so that's what I was going to ask, so when I did some calculations of my own on that six million, it seems like we're upside down on that six million, that it doesn't really even exist, because it would include the one point two million dollar CRG gift that's earmarked.
No, it was just for the general fund.
Just the general fund.
But we have twelve million dollars in cash.
Could give you that actual number, but I don't have it on me right now.
That's what I was trying to understand. So all, all the, all the, this, you, you want to move the revolving accounts up to eight hundred thousand dollars, right? So, so which.
I'm going to guess like.
God, why, I wouldn't know why you'd want to, but.
So revolving accounts?
What do you call them?
I don't know what you're referring to.
The, the, the police money and the, all that stuff, the tickets.
Those are all special revenue accounts, trust accounts.
Yeah.
So for example.
Are those included in the six hundred thousand or not, the money that are in those accounts?
No.
No.
Six million dollars, right?
But we don't have that money until we collect that money.
You must add a balance, right?
There's a.
So the schools have a, over a hundred thousand dollars.
So the direct answer to the question is, money goes into the revolving fund, then it goes out of the revolving fund, you can only spend what you took in, so let's take the, the library has a revolving fund for passport, oh, sorry, passport applications. So the, you go into the library, you pay your passport fee, the town gets a commission, a cut of that money.
Yeah.
That goes into the pay, the passport revolving fund. We pay for the, this person who does the passports out of that, because in addition to doing passports, she also functions as a librarian, so it's a good deal for us. But that money goes in, that money comes out.
No, I understand that, but there must be a balance at the end of the year. We don't spend a hundred percent of it before the end of, because I checked with the schools today, they, they have money left over from the end of the year.
I don't want to get into special education revolving, there's a whole set of rules around that, I can talk.
No, I'm not talking about the special education revolving, I'm talking about them, they rent out, they, they rent out their buildings.
That's correct, they, they use it for facilities.
Okay, so, so really, my question is, above the six million dollars, I know there's lots of money in different reserves, again, using the example of this gift from CRG, is earmarked to go to the tip project, is that or is it not part of the six million dollars?
It is not.
Okay, so in this spreadsheet, are all those earmarks in this?
No.
Okay, because we're going, and none of those, like, is the tip project in this?
No.
No.
This is only the general fund.
This is just the revolving annual budget.
Yeah, your budget that you vote every year.
Okay, so, there could be other stuff. Okay, so, there could be other stuff well beyond that, because what if a one point two million dollars doesn't cover the tip project facilities that we might?
It's possible.
Right, so there could be, that would come out of?
I'd have to go to town meeting for appropriation, probably out of free cash.
Out of free cash, so that, so, so the free cash, that's six million, which is not all free cash, right?
No.
No.
Six million is not free cash at all.
That's not free cash.
Two different things.
Maybe you could draw the distinction between the different categories of money that we have, so that we have an idea of, like.
I mean, so, you're, there are lots of different categories, the, a lot of what you're talking, like, special revenue funds include your evolving funds, your gifts and grants, like any other state and federal grants, ARPA, um, your, um, receipts reserved for appropriation, which include, included the tip, I think, um, and then you have trust accounts, which are all your stabilizations, um, like the INI stabilization, a lot of those accounts are all in trusts.
They're in separate accounts or?
They're all in separate accounts.
Bank, separate bank.
Yep, um, you have, your, our capi, we have a capital fund, we have, uh, chapter ninety fund, we have, we have a lot.
Yeah, 'cause when I was thinking the six million, I'm thinking of the nine hundred thousand dollars we put away last year, I'm thinking of the one point ten, I'm going, this, this.
All of our enterprise.
Six million dollars is already booked.
They're all separate, so what we're looking at here is just the general fund.
What does the six million dollars represent?
It's the unassigned fund balance in the general fund. That's how, that's how, in accounting.
So, did you start this chart with six million dollars and drew up with it?
No.
So, how do you draw off those funds?
This is, this chart is a budgetary chart, it's a budgetary fund balance. So, there's a difference between that and what you're, you're looking at, like a cash analysis, um, or something like that, maybe, but basically.
So, do we get to use the six million dollars going forward?
No, well, uh, so what, what closes out at the end of the year into free cash is essentially anything that is fully unassigned. So, even though you have six million and, you know, what they say is your unassigned fund balance, then they start looking at your, um, receivables, um, payments that haven't been made on, say, like a property tax or real estate. Um, they take that out, they take out any negative balances that you have in any accounts. They, they have a whole formula that they calculate to come up with what your free cash is, which is not, not keyed for anything else other than, it's nothing, it, there's no, there's no balance that could touch that amount, and that's what we get for free cash every year, and then we look to spend that amount on capital items, one-time purchases, we put any extra money into our stabilizations that that carries forward. Um, but the six million isn't just like money that we have on hand to spend on anything. Does that, I don't know if that makes sense.
It's hard to believe that we have four million dollars worth of unassigned money.
Mr. Dupre's point from earlier, if we were to pull out of any of those stabilization funds, requires a, a, a vote at town, a town meeting, whether it's a majority or two-thirds, depending on the type of stabilization fund you're going to try to pull from, but the idea of, of these funds is to build up, basically, it's like the town's balance sheet, we're building up our equity base, and that way we are a stronger, it's a stronger town, so when we go out to borrow, we have a better credit.
No, I, yeah, I understand that, so, so, so my, 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 my hypothesis coming up here is totally different from my hypothesis now, all right? So, now my question, now that I know that all these little accounts are not in the six million dollars, so that now we have ten million dollars or whatever on that particular date, um, we have a, how, so what was free cash certified at the, uh, it's gonna be, uh, last September?
Last July, um, which we're using for this town meeting was one million eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and forty-five.
We had a four point three million dollars of unassigned cash.
That, that's assigned for other things, in a sense, yes.
But it wasn't assigned as of July thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
It's, it's kinda confusing.
Twenty-three.
The terminology that they use. Unassigned, that, that is what our unassigned balance is, but they have to take, in order to certify free cash, they have to take out other things that aren't necessarily assigned, but are liabilities against our cash, like anybody who hasn't paid their prop, like, when, when we do the bills for our property tax, real estate tax, and if somebody hasn't made a payment, then that gets marked against what we can use for free cash. There's a lot of different things that they'll take out in order to get a free cash number, um.
And so, when that person pays it, do we get the money the next year or something like that?
So, we, we had a late payment on a commercial, um, business that was part of this certification. Um, that was in the amount of, I'm gonna say, like, three hundred thousand. So, if that had been paid on time, our free cash would have been increased by about three hundred thousand. So, when we close our books this year, as long as they make a payment on time, we'll recapture that three hundred thousand, because now it's gonna get, not gonna get marked off as a liability against us, and then hopefully we'll get the payment that they were supposed to make for the end of the year, so we won't get hit again in the future.
Seems like an enormous amount of money to be unassigned. So, how much do, so where do, where do we see that, it's just in, in free cash the next year or the year after or whatever?
Yep, when we close the books for this year, you'll see the new free cash certified.
Thank you very much, Julie.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to, uh, five, first of all, thank you, lastly, thank you, Julie. Um, Mr. Morton, can you come up? Uh, we're gonna get a roadwork update from our DPW director.
Good evening, Dennis Swan, Director of Public Works. Um, so we had, um, a, a bunch of roads that I, I brought in, and we're doing the process of shimming and chip sealing these roads, and all the shimming has been completed, um, which was Valerie Cliff, Walnut Terrace, um, Field Drive. We also did a section of Walnut Street that was in very bad shape, I don't know if anybody's driven on Walnut.
We have, I got multiple calls, people thanking us for getting that, getting that fixed.
So, we, we did that section, um, just wanted to clean that up and button that up. Um, there's also a section of, uh, Road Street from Bow Street to almost the town line, that looked like it was starting to de-laminate, so I added that into the project. Um, we're also doing Azalea, Pine Tree, Oak, Apple Tree, uh, Deerfield and Birchwood, those have all been shimmed. The, um, we're on the schedule for the chip seal, probably the third week of June, um, weather dependent. Uh, if we get a lot of rain between now and then, it may push us out. But I think at the, at the very least, it'll probably be, probably the end of June that we'll see that. And they're, we're, we're pretty high on that priority list. Um, you know, we've done some work, also, the guys are out there adjusting some of the structures today, uh, just to make sure that when they do come in and chip seal, everything's where it should be.
Excellent. Yeah, a lot of, a lot of good feedback from, uh, we notified everyone that this work was getting done, uh, this process, uh, you know, I, I found out that we, what chip seal even was when we did High Street, and at first I was like, what the heck is going on here? But, um, after it settled, it was great, and evidently it's a process that we use to do a lot more road repair than we can normally do with traditional, you know, just laying new, new road essentially. So, I just wanted everybody in those areas to know what to expect, right? Because it's a little shocking if you've never seen it before, um, but yeah, this is, this is great, we're taking, how many, do we know how many miles this is of, of town road or what percentage we're taking care of?
And what it was, it just, we're just trying to clean those whole subdivisions up, and this was the, um, road program, that, you know, these were the roads that were in that program, because it, actually, it's twenty-three, so we're a little bit behind on that.
We're gonna catch up.
I'm trying to catch up, and, you know, I do have some chapter ninety money that we're going out and we're gonna go through, we're meeting with Chris Roy from Beta to go through the, um, the new program that we got, just to make sure that it's all updated, and we're gonna proceed with some more roads this summer.
And I know, I've, I have gotten a couple of calls from folks that were, uh, part of a water, uh, I don't know if they were water main projects or what it was over on the hills over there, and we haven't closed, we, I guess we patched that, but we haven't done a top coat yet, is that scheduled?
So, I reached out to them today, they have come in, we did measure everything, um, waiting for the quote and when they're gonna come in and do it, so I'm trying to get on their schedule now. I was hoping I would have that answered tonight, but.
It'll be Potter, Pleasant, Grove, Melcher, Lincoln and whatever.
For this summer or?
This summer.
This summer.
I'm hoping June, July.
Yeah, they'll be.
Is what I'm hoping for.
Yeah, they'll, they'll be thrilled, 'cause they, they, they're under the impression we've forgotten about them, so I assure them we're not, but then they see other work being done, they're like, hey, what about us, so, okay. Another letter, yeah, let them know, okay, um, any else?
You know, going out, when we go get it closer to the chip seal, we are gonna send another letter out just to let everybody know that that process is gonna happen.
Perfect.
I would just say, the communication is huge, I think that was great, I think sending that out goes a long, long way, so. So, is the work on Weatherwell Place already started, like, why am I hearing about that?
Weatherwell Place, no, that was, we replaced the, the water main on that road two years ago.
So, there's nothing going on like right now?
Nope.
Okay.
Expect it will be this summer.
Okay, it's just funny because I'm hearing.
So, Paul put a binder code on that a long time ago, prepping, so the road wouldn't deteriorate.
Not in like the past month.
Sorry?
Not in the past month or, okay, okay.
I mean, we go out and, and check just to make sure that any, any of this water main hasn't settled, 'cause I don't wanna obviously repair a road and then have it settle on us.
Yep.
You know, we've been keeping a, a real good eye on these, um, just to make sure that they're in good shape and ready for milling and paving, 'cause that's what we're doing out there, milling and paving on those water streets, water main project.
Excellent, yeah, getting a lot of good feedback.
Yeah, I, I just wanna say thank you for progress, I mean, we, we've, we've got this money, we need to put it to use, um, the chapter ninety funds especially, and, and really do something for the residents that have been waiting. So, I think your communication has been great, seeing progress is gonna be great, I expect to see a busy, crazy summer of roadwork, 'cause this is our biggest single infrastructure investment, our roads, and we need to protect it.
Absolutely. Mr. Reddick, come on up.
The Potter, Pleasant Street, Melcher, would, I thought there was gonna be a letter going out to the people that you wanted to make sure that the sewer was A-OK there before you repaved those, 'cause that was under the water project, you guys talked about, you don't wanna pave a road if you're gonna have to dig it up for the sewer.
So, those streets, uh, that sewer project is not gonna be dug, we're gonna line it from manhole to manhole, and even the, some of the services, we can shoot them from the, the main up to the service.
So, has that area been all cambered and?
Been cambered, TV, um, inspected, so it's, it's, it's good to go now.
It's good to go.
Yep.
So, by putting on the final floor pavement, we're not gonna dig it up for any.
You're not gonna dig it up.
I got your guarantee on that.
You have my guarantee.
Can I see a shake of hands here?
Oh, no.
I can't control gas, but I, so.
That's, well, that's.
Just, you know, we, I've reached out to the gas company and let them know that we're doing this. When, when we paved School Street, uh, there was a house on the corner of, uh, I forget the name of the road, but.
Pleasant.
Pleasant, yeah, no, it wasn't Pleasant, it was further up, um, they came and said, well, we wanna put a service in there, I said, no, you guys have been out here and you actually put the dig safe marks in the milled part of the road, we denied them. And I told them, propane and, you're not, you're not digging the road up, 'cause we just paved it, weeks.
Jeez.
So, you know, short of a, an emergency leak, um, I won't allow them to, to dig our road up because they want to.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Noble, can you move that screen up a little, please? Final pass?
That's the other, see the spelling?
Thank you, Mr. Whitehead, you can have a seat. Come on up.
You gotta, you gotta fix that road, bring up the code.
Other words, Grove Street, a purely personal question, is Grove Street being repaved?
Yes, from, so from East Bacon to Pleasant, that section. East Bacon to, um, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
No, I'm sorry, you know, when?
I'm hoping the end of June, July, they'll be in.
Thank you.
I'm waiting for, to get on the schedule, and I keep hugging him, so.
Another happy customer.
Exactly.
Good, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Very hard on this to get this project across the finish line and, uh, very pleased, thank you.
Thank you.
My language. Absolutely, yeah, appreciate it. I mean, that's, it's one of those things that people see every day, and, you know, whether it's a pothole or a road degrading, it's like the biggest.
I'm really looking forward to having complaints about a lot of roads being constructed and there's detours and those dangers. I'm looking forward to this.
It's coming. Excellent, thank you, and thanks for sticking around for that, appreciate it.
Mike speeding after they done, if the road's over.
Yeah, right. Um, okay, under new business work, uh, at seven dot one, uh, special board meeting report regarding articles on the warrant and water treatment plant communication, so, Brian, I don't know if you wanna give a summary on that, I'm happy to give my take, but.
Certainly, um, well, I can use some help on it, actually, so I'll make sure I express it and get all the facts out. Uh, Julie was instrumental in, in checking with the SRF about funding, and apparently, we're not the only town that was a little annoyed by the, the way from DEP approving the syst, the system that we wanted to go forward with. So, SRF has extended the deadline until the first week in October, uh, we have to get back to them with the fact that we either did or, or did not pass it at a town meeting, and we are or are not interested in their funding. Um, also, because of the, the number per, per, forecasted and an un, an unclear picture of how much we could bond, how much would be at low interest, how much would be forgiven, that exclusion, how it would roll out, when it would be bonded, we are working closer with, uh, SRF to actually project out real costs, real opportunities, saying, okay, how much is this really gonna cost? And if we do walk away from the money, what is its true cost? Julie hasn't finished those calculations, but we are, um, uh, much better, in my feel, my feelings are much better about going forward with SRF as our partner, um, as a result of that. Because of that, I notified the chairman, who then notified the board, that we could pull the article from town meeting that was, weren't so much under the gun, and that will give us a chance to do a proper education plan, so people could understand what we were talking about, why it's important, uh, and I'm meeting next week, uh, with Capital to, to make sure that we set a schedule for education, and there'll be, uh, education sessions, we're gonna record them, we're gonna put them out on North TV, uh, and we're gonna try to make sure that we even come up with a special email address, so that people have specific questions about, uh, the treatment plant, they'll be able to, to ask that. So, I wanna thank the board for meeting in a very quick, uh, forty-eight hour notice Zoom meeting, uh, to put that, uh, to, to plan. Um, so I don't think I forgot anything else about what we did there.
Uh, the only other thing during that meeting, just while we were making that change to the agenda, there was an article about, uh, road acceptance, which we also were not prepared for, um, as well, so we took that off to postpone that for the special or for next year, I guess, uh, whenever we are ready and.
When the legal works done.
Yeah, exactly, when it's ready for the next meeting. You know, there's a couple, so, anyone who was at the, our last meeting, you know, uh, you know, massive, massive potential bill coming up, and we talked about it, we referenced it a few times, um, tonight, for a, a water treatment, uh, plant to get built, if, if it's something that the town wants, um, a lot of the information, um, was coming in kinda fast and furious as we're getting closer to town meeting, and I don't think any of us really felt great at all about having that on the, the warrant, but, uh, in our last meeting, we decided to leave it on the warrant, because we were under the impression that if we didn't, and then figure out how we were gonna communicate to the town between that last meeting two weeks ago and our town meeting, uh, June third?
June third.
June third, seven o'clock, um, that, uh, you know, we'd be rushing into a decision without having enough information, without having enough people educated on the topic, um, and, uh, that wouldn't be good for anybody. So, following, uh, because we were in that position, we felt like that, um, Julie and Brian, uh, reached out to figure out exactly how much we would lose, what the true cost would be, or if there's any way around that, and we found out that we have more time. And so, we're gonna take that time to do more diligence, put together, uh, a plan that, uh, you know, I've gotten a couple of calls where folks wanna make sure that the information sessions are not, you know, marketing sessions or. the information sessions are not, you know, marketing sessions or like a indoctrination sessions. This is the, I told Mr. Noble, from my perspective, this is the Walter Cronkite approach to information sharing. There will be no opinion, it's the facts as we know them. And to Mr. Webster's point from earlier tonight on another topic, to have a better understanding of the true cost, as Mr. Noble said, and the board's best attempt at how we would cover something like this, so that the town can understand that at the town meeting, which we would not be prepared in any way to have that discussion in a couple of weeks from now. So, thank you for doing that work. I'm really happy we were able to postpone this. It doesn't, doesn't make this challenge go away, it just gives us more time to hopefully get it right. So, those are my two cents on that.
Got a chance to make an informed decision one way or the other.
Um, just from my own perspective, I would say that before we start any information sessions, we need to receive the actual estimate from Beta that includes the scope of work and the details of it. We need to have a discussion amongst ourselves to confirm that we're going forward with the one-third, two-third split that we've talked about, because we've never talked about that ourselves. We need to talk about the water rates and how they'd be impacted, we need to talk about the impact of the budget, and like, I feel like there's a lot that we have to do before we can think about sitting down.
I second you.
Okay.
And I think that we can expect this to be a standing topic for discussion and updates between now and when a special meeting is scheduled.
Right. It just makes me nervous hearing we're talking about scheduling information sessions when I don't think we have the information to share yet.
Agree. That's why the meeting is repaid next week.
Okay.
Good points. If you've got a question, come right up, unless there's anything else from the board. Okay.
Question about our meeting.
Reed Webster, five Bugby Street. I want to reiterate that I would support Mrs. Clark's contention that we are nowhere near ready for this. Last week, I submitted, and you were very generous in allowing me the time, and I appreciate it. There is tons of information that is not available to the taxpayer to make a decision. There is a question of credibility to even be the designer of this project on Beta's behalf. They told us that they successfully built a water treatment plant. I put some research into that. They used the example of Stowe. I drove out there, I interviewed some people in the building, I researched it, I found their bid. Their bid was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that they put out to the public in December of twenty twenty-two for this project. They were doing a building that may or may not be connected to other buildings around in a complex that doesn't really seem to be a complex. So, the, the idea that they led us to believe that they have experienced building water treatment plants, there's a far cry from one and a half, a one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to a twenty-five million dollar plant.
Yep.
Okay?
Yep.
And it was not successfully built, because I found an article that was a couple of years old, where they said that they had the, the water bubblers covered, it said out of water because of PFAS. And I go in there, and I sent some of you a picture of the bubbler still out, and the water, the project is not complete. So, I, I don't know, I don't, I don't, it seems like a lie, okay? And it doesn't even seem like it, that we, those are the people that we should have designed our building, A, because, you know, they deceived us, and B, because they just don't even have the experience. There's a question, you know, Mrs. Clark mentioned that we need a, an estimate. Mr. Noble said he didn't have one at the meeting. Mr. Mackey, I guess his name is, says that there is one, that we don't have one today. Seems a little odd.
Mr. Noble, has that been shared since the meeting? Because that was a follow-up we asked for at that meeting, that that be shared?
We asked for that follow-up at that meeting, Mr. Mackey's been on vacation.
Jeez, I thought one, somebody, one of you told me that you spoke to Mr. Mackey.
I spoke to Mr. Mackey about.
No, somebody else contacted Mr. Mackey. I've heard of several people contacting Mr. Mackey. So it's outrageous that, that he didn't send this thing over the next day, or couldn't have his secretary send it over the next day, or one of the other people that work in his organization. So I really question whether it exists. I, I guess the, the other issue is, there's no basis for that, that twenty-five million dollars. There's just not. And to put that before the people, without even suggesting how we might pay for it. How we might pay for it, just like we didn't figure out how, we didn't suggest how we were gonna pay for it when we voted for Tri-County, if we'd have suggested for it, it might have changed the vote. That's an important part of, of this vote, how we're going to pay for it. Secondly, if it does go forward with a suggestion of a, a debt exclusion override, the idea, right, is we're gonna do it in the fall alongside the PAL, is the idea at this point?
Special town meeting?
Yeah.
That'd be up to the Board of Slegman, but that'd be my recommendation.
Okay, so, so that's a perfect example of why we could never do a debt exclusion override. The, the PAL is suffering from issues with their well, and everybody in this town who doesn't have, who does have a well, it could be subject to further regulation on their own wells, and find themselves paying for everybody else's water treatment in town, and then end up having to repair their own well. I don't think that's a smart move on the people who live in this town, and I don't think it's, I don't think it's appropriate to ask them to do that. So, I think, you know, among other issues, and I won't go through all the same lineage, but, but none of the questions that I asked and stood up here with a three-page PowerPoint presentation have been successfully answered. And to hire somebody to market this to us is outrageous. We, if you want to know about this project and you live in this town, it's been discussed here for the last, when did we start this project?
Two thousand nineteen?
Okay, so five years. It sounds wonderful to say that it's an educational seminar, but the reality is, it's a marketing seminar, because anybody who needed information about that project can listen to these things, they can go to the website and watch the videos of people like me getting up and talking about it, and the board talking about it. And it's, it's insane that you would spend money that we don't have, apparently, we're gonna be two million dollars short, to hire a marketing group who's, you know, twenty percent of their employees used to work for us, to, to market it to us. And I'm offended by that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your time.
On Sharp, thirty-seven Spring Street. Given Beta's track record, why should we be their lab rat for twenty-five million dollars?
Thank you.
I think Stowe's a very smart, I think Stowe's a very smart, Christopher. I think Stowe's a really smart town. Their whole town, based on what you said, they're all on wells and their own septic. A hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be in compliance of the state, this water system, where it's, where do I put the hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be in compliance?
But they're not, and they told us they were.
Yeah, and that's something that concerns me too, is, is what is the potential cost to homeowners on wells? And when does that regulation roll out? And what are, what is everybody else supposed to do? You know, are we, are we supposed to then be expanding the public water supply everywhere? Or are we supposed, you know, I mean, what do, you know? Yeah. I mean, yeah, I mean, we, we had a nice, long conversation about the things that don't make sense the last time we were here, and I don't know that any of it's gonna get even, you know, we'll get as much of it answered as, as we can between now and when the final decision has to be made, so we can make the right one. Any other thoughts, comments? Okay. Seven dot seven, I think is our last agenda item, unless I missed anything. That's the ClearGov announcement and introduction by Julie.
So this is, um, this is a massive project that we undertook. I know we started last year trying to get the budget up and our capital improvement plan up on ClearGov. This year, we were able to get everything out, and we have it now where it's public facing. You can go onto our website, you can click on.
Actually, I have it in like eight different places. You'll trip over everywhere. On the support's page, on the finance page, on the finance committee's page, and then the first one is listed as a department, which I think I checked on stage, but I may leave it there for anybody. It also went out as a, it will go out as an email blast this evening, as we've now got the opportunity to see it. It starts with a very ugly picture.
Look at that.
Youngin'.
He's from the high school rendering class.
That high school?
That was the last week.
That's a resume.
You can't see the boot mirror, but.
How much are all the new signs in town that's, you know, take a left to go to one oh six, Brian Noble Town Administrator, how much are those gonna cost? Promoting yourself.
So if you, when you're on this, if you toggle over any of these, like headers, introduction, operational budget overview, Brian, you want to toggle over, like, operational budget overview, like where the green is? Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You'll, you'll see dropdown menus. We, we worked really hard to try to cover a lot of different segments that would be helpful for people. A lot of this should be items that, you know, when, when you people come out and you want to hear about the budgets, and you ask questions at the select board and FinCom meetings, we wanted to put it all here for you to be able to see it at any point in time. So, for instance, Brian, if you click on the short-term factors, we're on the operational budget, so we have our budget, and then we also have a capital budget on here. You'll see, these are a lot of the pieces that have really impacted our budget for FY twenty-five. Each category kind of gives you a little summary of what we've seen overall, as, you know, changes to the department, like, you know, right here, we have the police. If you look at the police budget and you're, you know, what happened here, this was a, a major impact that we had, where we lost a lot of our grant funding for the MAC and for certain employees. So this, this section here kind of gives you an overall impact for our budget, a lot of different categories that weren't originally in it, changes to our electricity budget, the, the debt, water, water treatment facility borrowing as a potential. So, under that heading of operational budget overview, we have a bunch of different categories like this that try to give you priorities and issues. You know, we've, we've talked about this across the board, sustainability of keeping our services going forward, transparency, in putting all of this stuff out here on ClearGov. There's probably too much for me to go through at this point for everyone to see, but this category Brian's on is fund summaries. This is gonna give you in our operational budget, between the general fund and the different enterprise funds, a general overview of the revenues and the expenses. If you keep going down, Brian, these are the revenues up top, it'll give you line item totals for different categories. It has, it, it's very user-friendly, so a lot of times there's charts and graphs that you can, when you're using it on the website, you can kind of hover over and it'll highlight different things for you. Here in our, this is the general fund revenue, we went through an analysis of the single-family tax bill in comparative towns in Norfolk, so that's what this chart is. It's a lot of really helpful information that I think the residents want to see, and, you know, we've, we've worked on in the background and at different meetings, but here, it's all in one place. So, the hope is people will kind of play around with it, look through different things. It is a massive document. If you print the entire thing out, it's over five hundred pages, which Brian did print one, so that we would have it if anyone, you know, needed to look through. But there's a lot of info, and we're hoping to build on this every year. This kind of set a good groundwork for us, but every year, the, the hope is to keep updating it, and that way people can see year-over-year how we're forecasting, you know, tonight with the five-year forecast, I think it's important for people to see where we're going in the future, so that we can better plan for today. And I think this tool is a major piece of it. Brian's now going over, so we have the departmental budgets, you can click on one technology. So each, each department has a budget here, we give an overview of what the department does, we give a staffing history that, there's a, a general staffing history in the operational budget overview as like a whole of the town, but each department shows you their staffing history changes as well. Again, being the first year, I would have loved to have gone back and been able to add history information from like before the cuts were made, but I wasn't able to go back that far in the short time I had. So, we have twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. Again, everything kind of has the graphs, you can see the differences in the department. Keep going, Brian, there's, there's the line item breakdown on every budget. Some of the departments might have notes for different line items where there was, you know, a reason why something increased or decreased. And then every department has achievements, a section where you can kind of see what things have, has that department been doing over the last year or two. And then below that, there are goals and initiatives for the future upcoming year. Again, first year, so some of them are maybe smaller or more basic than others, but the goal is to try to make people be accountable, and also to, you know, kind of show off when they're going above and beyond as a department. As you go over, not, so that first kind of section is the operational budget, and then the next section, this is the capital improvement program, which is basically our capital budget. So these are kind of overviews of why we have a capital plan, what it involves. There are, if you, can you toggle over that again, Brian, the capital improvement? Go to funding sources. I think this is a helpful one, too. Sometimes people aren't aware of the different things when we talk about like the ARPA program or things like that. So, every funding source that's in our capital improvement plan is listed here with an explanation of what it is, what it can be used on, what we're planning to use it for in that year. So, again, you know, we have CPA, we have Chapter Ninety. It's, it's kind of a good overview for people if they're not sure, you know, what a certain revenue is, is or could be used for. And then, Brian, if you hit the arrow over at the top to go to, this is our capital improvement program, and you can look at it on a one-year or multi-year basis. So this is what our one-year looks like. Again, if you kind of toggle over the colors on any of these charts, they'll like light up and tell you what they are, which is helpful, again, if you're looking at it on the web and not printed out. If you go down a little bit more, Brian, so you can see this is how it's, this is by department, and then this is by funding source. And if you go further down, it'll start going by, like, you can click on that first one. So, like, the accountant request, if you click on the financial accounting software conversion, it'll take you to the entire project. So it gives you the description, everyone had to put in like a thorough description of what is that they need. This is for the new financial software that I'm hoping gets passed, that we can be better with our finances. And then it'll give you the total cost, the capital cost, and then below that, it'll give you how we're asking for it to be funded. So this one is funded by free cash. So for each capital project that we have listed, we did a five-year, six-year, if you include FY twenty-five, capital improvement plan. So, you're gonna see a lot more projects for FY twenty-five, because it takes a little bit for department heads to kind of see further out. So we had, we get a lot more requests for the current and now, but as we do this year-over-year, we're hoping that more people think out and start putting some future plans, if they have, you know, like the council on aging, put in some things where they might need the siding replaced in a year or two, and that's been really helpful. So we're hoping departments kind of look out there, because the more we can build out of our, you know, future needs, the better we can plan for our finances. So you'll see the multi, the multi-year, yeah, the, the first year has a lot, but we do have a lot in the other years. And we're also hoping to, this is the, this is the digital budget book, they call it on ClearGov. They also have a transparency page that we're working to put out, too. In that, kind of, I, I had a meeting about it today, this is all new and, you know, kind of getting it out there, but the transparency page, when we send it out, it's more of a rolling document or website, where these items will be uploaded onto it, like the capital projects will be uploaded onto it, but then we can update as things happen. So you can see, like, you know, if this project has been, yeah, if progress has been made, or if the design has been completed on a certain project, we'll be able to update that, so people can kind of see the projects in a real time, where they are, what's the next step, and then it'll, it'll all kind of inter- it'll, it'll all kind of integrate onto our budget book year-over-year. So there's a lot to it, but I'm hoping it's easy for people to kind of maneuver and read through, and hopefully people feel like they have a better understanding of what we're looking at for our finances and our budget this year.
Wow.
Pretty awesome.
Yeah.
Just to give you an idea, this is about 160 hours of Julie's work. And I would love to tell you that the health director did a job, it is well done, and it can be printed, I would recommend it can't, because it'll suck you to a rig drop.
It looks to be about seven pounds.
But just if you want to see it, that's the book right there in front of Julie, that we printed out one copy. There'll be a quiz later, because Ryan read this entirely, so we'll have a, you know, quiz for him. But I think this is the direction we want to go, so people understand, see, smell, fix, look, complain about, but do it with knowledge, and understand how this all comes together to form a budget. And I think one of the most important things that we do is we do listen to our department heads. That doesn't mean because they request it, we're going to do it, it means that they put it on the radar, this is something they'd like to do. It comes down to what you can afford eventually. I don't want people getting freaked out about looking at the capital budget request, this is the Christmas list, so this is what your department heads are saying, I'd like to have in the future. Some of those things may be a little more important than others, some may come in at less expensive numbers. But the other part of this is the budget itself. How are you spending it? Where does my tax dollar go? And is it being spent wisely?
Yeah, this is awesome, unprecedented, you know, access and, you know, you know, access to information in real time from our town, and I just know on, you know, just say on behalf of Rob Rose, wherever he is, great job. I'm sure this is, I know this is one of, you know, each year he would do his best to come up with his version of this, it certainly wasn't, wasn't that detailed, but that was for a long time, the only way that we got some of this information out, and this is awesome.
This shows the strength of our finance and accounting department now. I think we're up to snuff, we have the talent, and obviously, we're making good use of it.
Yeah, absolutely, well done.
And I think the department heads also contribute as well.
My job is done here.
Any other, lots of questions from the board?
No, it's awesome, I gotta spend some, I've looked at it, but it's, I need to really sit and spend some time. It's awesome.
Sorry, Julie.
Come on up.
Awesome job.
That is absolutely amazing. There's so much there, and it's going to be just a wealth of information. When I dove into this thing two, three years ago, I put our town versus other towns, or what I did was did a population search, and it broke everything down from 1,000 people less to 1,000 people more, and then you break down all the departments by expenditures, total budgets, total different things, and then it would do a mean, average of each one, would tell you how much over you want, the mean, how much under you want, the mean, by department, by everything, I break down, and the whole nine yards, and you got to be able to put that much information. So if we have another 10,000, 9,000, 10,000, if you put the parameters, 8,000 to 12,000, and now you have real potatoes to compare what we're doing, where our money's going to similar towns with similar population, and that is when you really can see where our money's going, and is it appropriate for the size of town we are, going to the right places. So I look forward to, I hope it still has that function.
Yeah, so this is, right here is our digital budget book, comprehensive budget book. ClearGov as a whole, I think, has a lot of those capabilities, we're subscribed to it, so you should be able to pull up any of our information and run those reports, and I think, too, when we have the transparency page up, which should be relatively soon, I just had an overview of it today, it takes a lot of this info and makes it a lot simpler for people to look at.
It's usually in a pie graph form.
Yeah, and so I think when we have that up, too, you'll, you'll have fun kind of playing around with a lot of that, too.
Yeah, it just makes you see where, you know, at the time, this building, we were 194% over our capital for town buildings and everything.
Yeah.
And this was in there, it was like, holy smokes, you could see where all the money was going.
Is that, is that going to have the salaries?
Come up to the mic.
It does salaries, what, for every year? Julie.
Are you asking, like, so what we have budgeted for salaries?
No, does that give the people that are employed by the town and the salaries they get?
Um, so no, on here, we don't have it broken out by each person's salary, but that's something we could add.
Well, vendors.
I'm sorry?
Vendors, same thing.
Like vendor contracts?
No, would I be able to see how much paid one vendor, or what?
Not, not with what, not with the platform that we have.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Well done, Julie.
Good job. Good job, yeah. All right, do we have any other public comment on agenda items that we didn't address?
No.
Okay, very good. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:55.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much, Frankel.